Ready? Good evening and welcome to the November 3rd School Board Budget Committee meeting. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'd like to know if there's a review or revision of agenda. Anybody? No? All set? Keep her moving. Superintendent, follow-up overview.
So really, I just wanted to ask the board if there were questions from the other night or things about the presentation that we can answer for you. I'm still on spinning pinwheel, so as soon as I get in, unless I just clicked over there, so I will get the thing projected.
I am not.
All right. So here we are, and we're going to present it. But if there are things that the board needed to ask.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't think there are any questions, but I think for the community's benefit, last night at the end of our public session during school board comment, I did present to the board a walkthrough of an Excel file with various tabs and various points of analysis. So the board had a level of comfort of some of the work that I've done to this budget, very similar to years past on the Budget Committee, same type of thing that you've all seen in years past. Unfortunately, it appears that as that presentation was kicking off, the recording stopped, and it's not available online to see that presentation for some reason. I don't know why. John Burnell was investigating that, and we'll look to see if that can be rectified. In the interest of time and for tonight and for those in the room, I do think it's prudent to take 10 minutes and just kind of re-explain the highlights of that file so everyone understands some of the top-level work that was done as well.
So I'll just speak for myself. I felt like the presentation was for the benefit of the board.
It is.
I mean, it is for the community, but tonight is for the board to understand what your questions are going to be and where you're going to be making. And I feel like I have a very good understanding. You were very helpful with talking that through. And so in the interest of time, I would say I'd rather have you post it somewhere so the town can people access it that way. We'd have to get rid of the salaries.
Yeah, it's got some personal information in there, right? So.
If we can get rid of some of the personal, because then people can click on it themselves and.
It's the will of the board. My intention is to make motions tonight, as I think is the, that's the board's expectation.
Absolutely.
And to give some background into some of those motions as opposed to just motioning, I think is beneficial, but it's the will of the board.
I think you can do that when you present your motions.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I would like to hear, though, if you have any further information from, that you've collected since last night, because I know that there was some follow-ups. And personally, I actually would be okay with a quick summary of your, not going through the whole thing, but just points about each, I guess, tab. So I personally would be okay with that. Maybe not 10 minutes, a quicker one than that, but, you know.
I like your presentation, my, I don't want to say my favorite part, nothing to do with, this is my favorite part, but your rationalization behind your cuts, I think it is more than fair for you to give the reasoning and how you came to that conclusion.
Okay.
Tina?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think, you know, we had a good conversation about it last night. I think the analysis was helpful for us. I did understand where things were, you know, where, what Andrew's thoughts were and why. But I, I think, you know, I agree that this is our opportunity to ask further questions for clarification of our admins and our staff members and our directors. And I'd rather spend the bulk of our time doing that.
Sounds good.
Excellent. All right, are you up, Dr. Jenny?
Well, so if there are no other questions from the other night, we're going to launch right into the Buildings and Grounds section of the budget. So this is Dave's week to be out in a tree stand somewhere, so he is not with us. But Doug and I have met with Dave and have gone through this. And we're going to kind of co-present. It's really Doug presenting with me jumping in as necessary to walk through, really, some of the increases that we're seeing in terms of services for our three facilities. So Doug?
All right. So there's definitely several slides to this, partly because this is where the fuel, the energy that works costs are going up, and they are going up more than has in the past. So we definitely want to make sure that we're explaining it in detail so people understand it. So a couple of quick things before we get there is we took a look at all the annual inspections that have to occur, which is a good thing. And some were listed before and some were not, but we wanted to have that complete list. And then we wanted to move them all together into one line. So you'll notice that under each school, there's the inspection line and it lists several different inspections that happen every year. Along with energy, there's other things that have gone up. So we did 3% increase for inflation for supplies. Water, we project to be probably 10% increase, could be more. Rubbish removal, so that will be an increase which we'll see about halfway, I think, through that year. And then with just GMS, you know, just being another year older, we put in just a 10% bump up in just the maintenance of that building as well as we want to see it when kids are in there. We just want it to be as serviceable as, well for the kids. So, and then with LMS being much more dynamic in how it's going to operate with solar grid and then the higher efficiency HVAC, we put in a monitoring fee for that as well so that can be kind of looked at from an outside company. So from there, though, we're going to get into more of the drivers of Buildings and Grounds, which are the energy prices. I think Mike was going to go over this slide.
So we just put together a quick slideshow to, I think everybody at home is feeling this, so this is not going to be new to anybody. But we wanted to take a look at what the impact was on us as a school district. So it's one thing to have a home electricity bill. It's another thing to have an electricity bill from three big schools. And this really tells a story. In January of 2021, we were paying 6.8 cents for a kilowatt hour. So that's our per kilowatt hour price from Eversource. In January of '22, this last January, it went up to 11.2 cents per kilowatt hour, so nearly doubled. And in January of '23, we have locked in for a year with the energy supplier at 17 cents. This is just the supply side, so we're not getting into the, I'm sorry, this is the energy side, not the supply portion of it. But we blocked in at 17 cents. And our consultant, when we asked what we should be planning for in January of '24, which is the second half of this fiscal year that we're budgeting, we were told 45 cents is what we should be planning for. We know that a lot of that is driven by the market. A lot of that has to do with natural gas prices and worldwide dynamics that are going on. But that's the amount that we put in for a half a year based on what our energy consultant is telling us. And Doug and I keep looking at each other, to be perfectly honest. We look at each other, we're like, really? I mean, from 17 to 45, is that right? But then we look at 6.8 to 17, and we have to trust the energy consultant who's saying, this is the number you should be projecting going forward. So I just want everybody to understand, those are the increases that.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We're feeling at home and the increases that we're projecting for the school. One thing to point out is, and this is where three-year averaging can be tricky, because we were not predicting, so we weren't as worried when we went up. When we went to 11.2, we thought, okay, this has to be a cap or a max. And so when it now came at 17 cents, that's where we're sort of upside down in the current budget, because we did not make those predictions in the same way last year. We were way more aggressive about it this year. Oil tells a different story. It was $1.64 in '21. Last January, we were paying $2.35, we locked in. This year, we locked in at $3.79, which actually is a pretty good price. Part of it is that we buy a lot of oil. And so that is a supply and demand kind of price that the school district was able to get. And we're, the projection we have is that we should be planning on $4.50 a gallon. So at the end of, during this budget, by the way, that's only, the only oil left will be at GMS. So we don't have oil at Campbell, and we are removing the oil tank at the middle school, perhaps, well, as soon as we get everything fired up there. So we won't be needing it this winter, but the ground may be too frozen to take the tank out at that point, so it may have to come out in the spring. But it's coming out of the ground. And so we will avoid that kind of increase in oil at the middle school. And then with propane, same story. From $1.33 up to $3.15 is our projection. We're currently paying $2.25 for propane. But the way it was explained to us is it's really a byproduct of natural gas, and you just need to realize that as one goes up, the other sort of follows in suit. So $3.15 is the amount that we've been given. So scary numbers. We have to heat the schools. We have to turn the lights on. We have to do all of those things. I was joking with the SAU staff that if you saw the news article about the superintendent in Maine who channeled his inner Jimmy Carter, I think, and said, put your sweaters on, I'm turning the heat down to 65, and the parents went ballistic. And I said, I'm not going to be that guy. So it was not well-received. So I think, you know, we have an obligation, especially with students with bearing knees, to make sure that our buildings are comfortable and well-lit.
So I think if we go back for one second, as we look at the projections for next year, oil and propane are currently over those numbers right now. Like today, if you were to go get oil or propane for your own house, it'd be over those. So, you know, electricity is not. But, you know, so as we kind of use those numbers for our projections and those numbers result in these large increases, you know, that's, our goal is hopefully to have it less than that. But as of right now, we wouldn't even be able to get less for oil or propane. So. So as, as we kind of look at use before and then project out with those prices, that is a big part of the over half million dollar increase to Building and Grounds budget. So again, the tricky part in this is that our, we're comparing to fiscal year '23 budget. We know we're going to go over the fiscal year '23 budget in energy costs. So that, that large number would have, would not have seemed as much of an increase if our fiscal year '23 budget was a little bit higher. But this was an every-town thing. I don't think many towns planned for where we're going to be going for energy costs this year or next year. So as, as we looked at oil, propane, and electric, using those projections, that was an increase of $196,000. And this is a tough part about the budget, because we're just talking about heating one building, not, then that's an increase, so in addition to what we had budgeted for this year. CHS, increase of $164,000. As you break it down, you'll notice that like GMS had a higher increase in electricity than, than CHS did. And that's because we, between kind of working with the New Hampshire and with Eversource, so we got the seed grant, we had money from Eversource, and then we used Impact These, and they did a lighting project at the high school to move everything both inside and out to high-efficiency lighting. So we had our first full bill of that with students in there that came from September. And then we readjusted all of the kilowatt hours after that due to that decrease. So, you know, $164,000 would have been more if that lighting project wasn't done. So that was nice to see that, that number being able to shrink from that. LMS, we actually, from, again, this is compared to the budget, we have a decrease of $14,000. And that's because we would be signing the power purchasing agreement with the solar, where that agreement also includes all the electricity that we'd be using during that year, and that's $95,000. So from the budget of $110,000, if you added up the oil and electricity, it went down to $95,000. So, next one? So speaking of the middle school, so another increase in Building and Grounds is that lease payment for all that equipment, all that work that is occurring at the middle school. So this year, we had budgeted $195,000. The overall annual payment is $363,000. So that's a, you know, $168,000 increase. So there are savings due to that work at the middle school, which you'd expect there to be. We felt like if you have all-new equipment, you can bring down a lot of the repairs and service and maintenance budget that you have there, too. So you can see the first four are us bringing down, not necessarily to zero, but in some cases, pretty close to zero, you know, that what we had budgeted for, for work at the middle school. Everything would be under warranty, and, you know, we would be using the warranty if something came up with those, those mechanicals at the middle school. So, next slide.
So actually, can I just clarify that FY '23 had $195,000 of the $363 budgeted? So you're saying it's a $168 increase? So it's both of those?
So when we promoted with the public, if you remember, we said that we were going to pay for it in two ways. The $195,000 in sort of paying back the lease. So that dollar amount was raised and appropriated by the voters. And then the rest would be in operational savings that we would find in the budget. So the operational savings we need to find to make the lease payment of $363 is $168. That's the extra that we have to be able to say.
Okay, got it.
Here's how we save that amount in order to pay that off and make it a long-term cost saving to the taxpayers. So at the bottom of the slide, it's, what, $44,280 lined up? And then we're going to expand on that in a second.
Okay.
Just keep track of, so far, we're saying, you know, we're not going to have to repair brand-new equipment. It's all under warranty, so we'll take that reduction. All right, so $44,280 so far toward the $168.
So the lease is paying for all that equipment and all the labor that put that equipment in, as well as other things as well. You know, we were able to, there's no more outside class, modular classrooms at the middle school. We're able to find space within that existing building. And there's no more plans to, you know, expand that building or to add, you know, modulators back into that. So if that work didn't get done, then we would be using the same projection that we use for CHS and the elementary school, using those same numbers for oil and for electric. And our electric budget would have been $148,000, oil budget about $108,000. So if you add those two together, again, if the work hadn't been done, we'd be sitting here tonight saying we need $256,000 budgeted to heat the middle school. So our annual cost again, next year for solar, for the power purchasing agreement, is a set price of $95,120. It's a little bit higher than that. It's about $97,500. But then they lease the roof from us, because they're using the roof in order to put the solar on there, for about $2,500, which brings it down to that $95,000. So if you take that, what we would have been coming here for the middle school, that $256,000, and you take away what we will be paying, the $95,000, that's a difference of that $161,000. So then the next line, which adds up to the $205,000, is just adding each of those numbers that you've seen on this slide and the past slide. So the $1,000, the $20,000, and now this new $161,000. So that would come up to $205,000. So that we're either moving from other budget lines or projected of savings if we hadn't done the work. Now with the work, again, it's going to have, you know, high efficiency. It's going to be much more integrated. So there's a benefit to bringing in an outside company to monitor what is going on so we can make tweaks, you know, in more real-time. So that's an additional cost that would be a yearly cost as well. So taking that off of that, that's what brings us to that $194,512 that would go to offset the lease for the middle school.
So that's the cost avoidance number that we've been talking about, based on what actually happened with energy costs at LMS. So had we not done the project, that's what we're basically.
So that's the $195, basically?
Right. So instead of paying it out the door to Eversource or whoever the oil company is, you know, that's available to go toward the, it's more than enough. It exceeds what has to go out the door for the lease. So it does result in $35,000 roughly in savings right out of the gate. And this isn't even capturing savings out of Campbell that we also talked about, but we don't have to rely on.
So that wraps up our slide presentation for Building and Grounds.
But I want to, I want to pause and make sure that we're clear on the energy, because this is a big project. We asked, we asked the voters to enter into a partnership with us and to recognize that we were going to be able to renovate the building, get it almost grand-spanking new, and at the same time, to pay for it through realizing greater efficiency in there. So this is key, this is the first time we're looking at numbers that sort of explain where we landed on that. I want to make sure the board's comfortable.
Does anybody have any questions? Andrew, you look like you have a question.
Just another one. If you go back to the slide where CHS Electric was presented? Yeah, thank you.
Electric and propane.
Electric and propane, you have it bucketed together, right? And so for everyone's benefit, the electricity is $111,000. Excuse me, the electric budgeted is $105,000, and the propane budgeted is $65,000 to make that, to make up that total. The increase year-over-year is $164,000 between the two lines together. My question, and I just want to be crystal clear on this, because there's an increase year-over-year, are we reflecting the revised kilowatt hours in Campbell for the savings because of the LED lighting project?
We are. And that, to Doug's point earlier in the presentation, he said, we really had to wait. So the classroom lights were completed right toward the end of school, right? So it was kind of wrapped up early June. That's not a normal month to be checking on what's happened. And so we waited until the September bill came in, and we said, all right, how much did September reduce compared to past September? So there's a spreadsheet that shows how many kilowatt hours we used this September compared to the last five Septembers. And we got that amount, and that's what we used to project forward. So we said the same thing or a similar thing ought to happen going forward based on that. That's how we arrived at that dollar amount, forecasting off of actual savings. Thank you. You're welcome.
So as we looked at bill, and of course, we only have this one month. Luckily, it was 28 days that the meter was running in year '21, and then 28 days in year '22, so there wasn't any additional math. But there was 50,800 kilowatt hours in '21 and 43,200 kilowatt hours in '22. So we made sure that as we brought it down, I think we even brought it down to less than 43,000, because for us, we didn't, we have two numbers. We have the amount that we'd be using and then the cost per gallon or per kilowatt hour. We wanted to make sure that the amount we were using was less up for debate, if that makes sense, because, you know, because it's hard looking at these numbers, you know, an increase of $164,000. So we know that looking at, at costs of 45 cents per kilowatt hour is not fun to look at. So we, we didn't want the amount of kilowatt hours to be over what it had been or over what we think it would be either. So we tried to keep those the same, if not a little bit less.
Thank you.
Can I ask a general question, or are you still going to keep presenting?
So we're done with Buildings and Grounds.
Okay.
Yep.
So just a general question that I think relates to all the budgets, but particularly with Building and Grounds. I'm looking at, on page 10, under inspections, and I think it's for GMS, based off of where we are. Yeah, so $460. I'm looking across, and I'm seeing that our actual expenditures were $4,000, and then $3,700, and then $5580. But the approved budget for '23 was only $25,550, and then now we're, what hap, why the discrepancy, I guess, in that? Number one. And number two, what information do you have of, at the time that you requested the '23 budget, '22 hadn't closed yet, so you wouldn't have known you had spent $5580 for the year, correct? So you would have been basing it off of '21 numbers?
So what I, what I think happened is that not all of the annual inspections were ever accounted for in the budget. So it would be like, oh, pay this out of the maintenance line, because it is a maintenance item. You have to have the inspection done. But it wasn't labeled as such. And what Doug and Dave did is they captured all that and said, if it's an inspection and it occurs every year, put it in the annual inspection line. That's why it went up, because they were all actually there. So, so you can't even compare what we did pay. This is another area where three-year averaging isn't going to work for you, because this is a complete comprehensive list.
Yeah.
And going forward, you should be anchoring on the $8,000, because that's what it really costs.
Because that's what we intend to pay, and that's what we need to, to have things inspected. I guess I'm just sort of seeing that pattern as I look throughout this budget and sort of seeing, okay, FY '21, which is what you would have known at the time you budgeted for FY '23, a lot of those numbers seem to be higher, but yet the '23 budget was lower. Was there an expectation that things were going to go down? I don't know, I'm just.
There was not an expectation there would be less expensive. Maintaining buildings goes up every year. I think it's just a matter of there were buckets that we had tapped into that weren't explicit, and now we're being very purposeful to make it crystal clear. You know, I can't even say which inspection was. I'd have to pull last year's budget to see which ones weren't in there, but they're now there. And so we're trying to be more mindful and purposeful in presenting.
So a lot of the credit for the inspections would go to Ann. So Ann wanted to work with us on the inspection part to make sure that what we have been paying, we were showing. So she did a lot of the digging for that to make sure that the line was all coming together and it was very clear, and then hopefully will be very consistent moving forward.
Perfect. Again, it's a small, small item, but it's, I just see the pattern sort of playing out a little bit on the other ones, and I just want to understand it. So thank you for the explanation.
Did the emergency light inspection include the new lights we have out, the emergency lights outside, blue lights?
The blue lights?
Yeah.
So those are the, like the one on the wall?
That's what I thought.
That kicks on if the electricity goes off?
Yeah, that's what I thought. So I would assume the blue lights need to be inspected at some point, too.
Well, they can either be inspected, or we can put them in test mode, and we can test them ourselves.
Thank you.
Okay. So I've been looking at the slide while you've been talking, just trying to figure out. Okay, so we have, essentially, you've calculated $195,000 in cost avoidance from the solar project. However, we're, the request is to increase the budget, let's say $180,000. So in essence, is the, I mean, that's due because it's delayed, right? That's due because of the delay. But, so we're, so in essence, we're really realizing like a $25,000 cost avoidance between the two of those, you know what I mean? So if we did nothing, it would have been?
Well, if it did nothing, then it would have been plus, plus the $260, I think they said, or somewhere in that 200-something.
The 250.
So not only is it not including the 200-something, but it's also down the one cost avoidance, the $194, but then there is the price of the lease, right?
Right.
So I think the, the extra cost of the lease is in there.
Yep, it is.
And the, if you compare the $194 to the $168?
Yep.
Right?
$161? Is it $161?
That's the top number. But then there's the other.
No, I'm sorry, in, in the budget, if you go to the.
Oh, this budget.
The bottom line of Buildings and Grounds, it's an increase of $168.
Yes.
And it would have been higher than that if we had to add oil and electricity at LMS. So, so the point, remember I said it really is about a $35,000 savings? That's about the difference between the $168 and $194. I'm using rough math here, but you understand.
Yes.
If we had done nothing, we would have the same building in disrepair.
So we're still realizing savings.
Paying for the electricity, yes, you are realizing savings. And this is the first time that we can actually articulate it and show it.
But it's unfortunate that that savings being eaten up by the increased cost of the other buildings with electricity and.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's fortunate we did one-third of our buildings.
Yeah.
So I get torn both ways, but.
Will the LMS lease payment for the next 18 years be $363 or $36?
I believe that's the annual with the last, the last payment, I think, is a half-year payment.
I think it might be.
So it's like $181, I believe.
Any other questions?
That's, that's what it, it's $363. Let me double-check it. I'm doing the numbers from memory, and I shouldn't. Let me make sure I have it right.
Can we expect an approximate $363,000 payment for the next 18 years?
Yes, with a partial payment.
With a partial payment at the final. Got it.
There you go. Anything else?
What about the balloon payment for the solar? I know that's not applicable for this particular year, but it's something that we need to think about and be ready for.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. So a reminder to the board, the $95,000. Yeah, you're absolutely right. So a reminder to the board, the $95,000 PPA, in year six, there is a balloon payment to purchase a solar array. We're working with the attorneys and the insurer right now, in fact, emailing today on getting that PPA finished up. And there is actually an option to purchase it in year 10, but I'm not sure that that's financially beneficial, so we have to further analyze exactly what that means. But, but that balloon payment, when we went into this adventure, we acknowledged that was something we were going to have to reconcile down the road. I think right now, we're not proposing anything in terms of coming after that balloon payment. I think there could be some potential down the road that will help us out, but our recommendation is to wait another year and see exactly where all the rebates, funding, incentives land, because I think that when we know the total amount of that, that can actually help us toward figuring out that balloon payment. The negative is, it kicks a can another year, and I'm going to say that out loud. It's one, one less year to pay a $600,000 bill. But I think in the long run, if we wait to see where the incentives come, it will, it will help us to, it'll be crystal clear what we need to do to get that done.
Are you ready to move on? You have more, Doug?
Well, I'm up again.
Yes, you are.
And now I'm going to introduce Doug Tynan to talk about the business office in transportation.
This one may be a little bit quicker. So business office, there's, there's not a lot of movement there. We did move the movie licensing back to the school, so that's, that gives them the ability to watch movies. It's run through the SWAN organization. So we moved back to the school and just split it up by a third. And then we adjusted for some increase in, in our software, as that continues to go up each year. So that's the business one. I don't know if there's any questions on that?
I do have a question about that movie licensing, because I did see it in each of the individual school budgets, and I appreciate that. I also saw, though, requests in some departments for DVDs, and I'm wondering, is the, is the movie licensing, is that something that can be used instead of the purchase of DVDs?
So the movie licensing is really the copyright, if you show a movie that has copyright on it.
Oh, okay.
The SWAN organization owns all those copyrights.
SWAN.
And you are violating their copyright if you show it without their permission.
Okay, all right.
So by paying this fee, it's a licensing fee.
Okay. It's not the actual movie?
It's not the actual, it's not buying the movie, it's just permission to show the movie. So even if you buy a DVD, you still need SWAN's permission to show the DVD in a public setting.
All right.
You know those threatening things in the FBI that pop up?
Yeah. All right. Well, then I think we should have that.
We should have that.
Okay.
There's no, like, Netflix for schools.
We don't talk about any of those things.
I think most of the DVDs were at the elementary level, that they were looking to purchase.
There were some in the, like, the English department, the high school for Lit Film, things like that.
Any other questions on business?
Straightforward.
All right. Also straightforward for this year would be the transportation. So that would be our last year of our contract, 3% increase, which if you look at the cost of rise in fuel, as well as the cost of, you know, the compensation for who drives the bus, 3% is a deal. So as we look at next year, it's great. As we look at a year further, it's not going to be as simple as just going up 3%. I don't know what it will be, but guarantee you, it's going to be decent amount more than 3%. So we'll go out to bid. You know, obviously, we'll look to get the best price we can get, but, you know, with having, I think this was a five-year contract, so back five years ago, no one knew that the price for labor was going to go up so much, or the price for fuel is going to go up so much, so it's going to be, you know, on the other side of the contract is where they're going to make up for it all, but.
Michelle, Doug, and I started our day with our monthly call to transportation, and Sean Prendable, who's been there six years out of the Nashua Depot, said when he came, they were paying drivers $16 an hour, up to $26 an hour. Other, other bus companies in the area have increased above 26, so they no longer are competitive, or the highest, or whatever you want to call it. So, so they're going to have to, when they negotiate their next labor agreement, make sure they can have drivers. Knock on wood, we've been pretty good. Our bus drivers have been relatively steady. They did, you know, we complained about the quality of the buses we were getting, and we got new buses, a good fleet. I think our children are transported safely, so, you know, but we're going to have to go out to bid again, or find a way to maintain proper transportation services.
And the two trips a day is working out good?
It's worked out well. The routes are working well. I think we're in a good spot transportation-wise, but.
With declining enrollment, one of the conversations that we've had in years past, and I remember being on the budget meeting at the time, as we reduced it from 10 buses to nine, is nine going, going into next year's the right number?
So I think we would have to take a look at what the actual ridership counts are, so let us do that, to know whether there is a potential to go down.
Because I believe in the contract, we're allowed to do that if the numbers work out.
And I think, you know, the other piece, too, and Doug's not wrong, it's going to cost more because of the cost of labor, the cost of fuel, but we also have, have reduced one run around town, so not having that high school run early that didn't have a lot of riders on it. I think that's a leverage point we have going into contract negotiations, so we'll put all that in the pot and see where we land. All right. Good on transportation.
Yes.
Move us to SAU and school board. And so the SAU budget has an increase of $75. That's a projected increase due to the PB season pass, so we buy a season pass with the association, and then we utilize it, it depends on what conference it is that we're attending, but whether it's used by a director, or sometimes the administrator, sometimes we have teachers who attend the conferences. The season pass is a very inexpensive way to do it, because it gets you a ticket to everything going on for the year. So that's a total of $75. On the school board side, we see an increase of $3,100. That's all driven by election services. And the reason for that is that we learned communicating with the voters is a, is a critical part of what we need to do, and to make sure that people understand exactly what our proposals are. And so we have increased the amount that we have for information to make sure that everybody understands what they're being asked when it comes to the annual election and the annual meetings. Okay?
Does anyone have any questions, questions, comments?
I did. Legal services, where are we at this year with that?
We have, we're actually spending high on legal services, and so I can get you an exact expense account on that, but this year, we have had a significant number of consultations with the attorneys for specific student situations, plus we have, we've had a consult with them, obviously, relative to the budget situation that we were in. We needed legal assistance with that. And have also, I'm trying to think, like, they reviewed the power purchase agreement, so there's an expense. So when you, all the things that we're involved in are costing us extra. Now, it's not going to, I don't think we're going to exceed the budget, because we're not negotiating contracts. So in the past, when we have our legal team involved in negotiations, that's also very time, time-involved and expensive. We're not doing that, so, but unfortunately-
Not doing this year, but next year.
Not doing it this year, but unfortunately, what we usually see is in a non-negotiation year, the legal expense has not hit as hard as being used this year. So I'm going to invite Mary to join us. I'm thinking Mary's here, yes?
She is.
Excellent.
Please someplace warm.
Good. And Mary's going to walk us through the curriculum and instruction budget.
Good evening. I get to be the first one to come up and really tell you that my budget is up significantly. It shouldn't be a surprise. I tried to be upfront to the board about that. We've seen a huge increase in the last year in our textbook and program pricing. We are up to purchase a, basically, K through 5 ELA program for the upcoming school year, and we are looking at a cost between K, the K program, which is about 11,000, and the 1 through 5 program, which is 75,000, at a, a huge jump. We've cut everything else back, but that still does leave us at a significant increase. The other area that we're seeing a big increase in is in our software. I stripped down our software line. Chris was able to absorb some of the district-wide software that was in, in my budget, but we have, we've been utilizing iReady for the last three years, where this is, this is year two, this budget may be year three. In our first year, it was a pilot with our personalized pathways. The company was not super clear on that. We were able to negotiate this past year to get them to cover half of the personalized pathways, so next year, we're looking at actually having to cover the full cost. The personalized pathways have been one of the most important pieces to this benchmarking software that we've had. We are using it currently at our, our middle school. We are using it, I presented the numbers last night, but at roughly 70% of our students are already in and using the personalized pathways. And at our elementary school, we are looking currently at about 30 to 35% of our kids are in using the personalized pathways. So that has been really the important part of the tool for our kids to be able to close those learning gaps. The other piece that we've seen an increase in is our course reimbursement. That is all driven by the contract. Last year, the, our budget came in under the actual allocation in the contract, and we had so many requests that we actually had to find money elsewhere to be able to fund the requests that we are obligated to pay in the contract. The other piece is that we have an increase in administrators, new administrators this year, that are looking to take courses and further their own education, and we had cut that line basically down to nothing. So we are looking currently, moving into this, this current school year, we have had to do a lot of work trying to juggle grants to be able to cover the contractual obligations to pay for coursework for our administrators. Because of the other increases, I do not have a lot of flexibility in my lines. I've cut most everything down as much as I can. I did decrease my professional development line, because I wanted the board to see that I am willing to make the cuts where, where we can, but there's not a whole lot more to come, unfortunately. And that's about it.
Questions?
Are certain things dropping off because you're, certain things are being added?
I've taken certain things off because we're adding, because the budget, because of the increase in the textbook lines, I really have tried to sort of watch down. In years past, we've not necessarily done that, so coming into this year, for example, we purchased, we were able to purchase, I budgeted in this, this budget year for a single year of our K-5 math program, or K-4 math program. We had remaining funds from last year, was able to actually get a three-year contract with that, which was my goal. I don't have that flexibility anymore. I've stripped everything out that I can. We don't have contractual services, which are things that tended to not fully get spent. I stripped those out last year to try and come in under budget, and unfortunately, because of that, the increase in textbooks and software has-
Spiraled it, yeah.
Has hurt this year.
Anything else? Thank you, Mary.
All right, so next we have our Director of Technology, Chris Jamrod. Chris, go over to the middle, because they got the mic right here. Thank you.
Hello? So I kind of just put up a point of where the budget goes for the technology, and some of the changes that has happened since I got here. So the first thing is, we get Chromebooks for our fifth and ninth graders every year, and then the last one through all of middle school, all through the high school. I adjusted a bunch of the lease numbers, so we're trying to get away from some of the software that we've leased out, so we can lower those numbers, and I moved some of them to software that were actually software, opposed to leasing. So that's why the software increased, including some of the software that I took from Mary as well. So that line did go up a little bit because of that, and then also, the cost of software has gone up. Most of my vendors, I was able to get a quote of what they projected it to be for next year. Some of them, I kind of just added, you know, 3%, because that's what it's been normally. The internet and phone costs, those are big shifts. Basically, we were paying significantly more for phone than internet, but internet was budgeted more than the phone was. So I kind of changed those lines around, and in doing so, I've been working with a phone company, and actually, the number that you see there currently, which is requested 69,000, working with the phone company, next year, I will be able to lower that by 16,500 off of the 69, being a total of 52,500. So I just got that this week from them, so I wasn't able to put that in this, but.
What is that number?
So the, I, I'm going to save $16,500, so that line requested is 52,500.
So that changes your bottom line of being-
To about 5,213.
That's great. Good job.
So I worked with them on that, moving things around, looking to get into eFAX. All these things are going to help bring down that cost. Couple of other things that we wanted to do was keep up with laptop replacements for the teachers. They are pretty rough around the edges on some of them, and I want to keep that ball rolling, because I got a few this year, but I'd like to keep that going. CHS, the labs, there's two of them in the budget. I put in for one for now. Next year, I'll be looking to get the next one upgraded as well. They're just kind of getting towards the end of life, struggling with some of the softwares that are coming out. It's not in my budget, it was in the buildings, as you guys saw, with the interactive panels, so that's going to be, again, 14 on carts for the district. And then the last piece was keeping up with the infrastructure. Some of my switching and networking is getting up there in age, and I want to be pretty preventive of any problems, and start getting those replacements. I had some in this year for my budget. They're looking at eight to 10 months out to purchase them, so getting that order in, and hopefully getting those in sooner than later, but keeping that ball rolling, so we don't lose anything on the back end.
CHS lab replacement, that's a computer lab.
Computer lab, yep, yeah.
Which room is that in?
So there's two, and I haven't, we don't know which one of the two yet needs it more, but they are both in rough shape.
They're having a programming class in the computers.
There's a programming and like an art, like a graphic art. So the graphic art is probably the one farther behind, because those are more demanding, but.
Questions?
No, Andrew had some questions about that last night.
Yeah, so on the software line?
Yep.
Bottom of page one, top of page two. The software line is $42,905, an increase of $12,055. I know you explained a little bit about the software increase and the movement. I was comparing the descriptions and the breakouts to last year's budget, and it appears there were several with increased costs, such as VMware support, we had budgeted $875.
Yep.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, that went down. It was 5,400, and now 875. There's one here for Kami PDF editor that wasn't in there before for 4,500. Is that new?
That's something we've had, and I stole from Mary's budget.
Okay.
So I'm kind, I've been trying to consolidate them into-
So it's been repurposed from another budget into this?
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it all in one place, so it's easier for me to, I bought it at the beginning of the year.
Same thing with Power School Test Server?
Power School Test Server, I did not see in the budget late, last year, and it's something that Andrea absolutely has to have, to test things before we put it live to the teachers.
So that is new.
So it's something that was paid out of somewhere else, but I definitely want to put it in there, so we always have that.
Gotcha. The GoGuardian?
Yep. GoGuardian is our, it is a classroom management, but it's mostly a web filter, which by law I have to have, so.
That's up 5,000?
Yep, that's because, I'm not sure what it was exactly for last year, because I didn't do the budget, but this is for every single student. do the budget, but this is for every single student. It goes by student account.
So shouldn't it go down?
I don't know what it was for la, I don't know if it was...
Ten thousand one hundred.
I don't know if it was for K through twelve last year.
I know the high school always had it. If someone's looking at something inappropriate, like how to talk like an ogre, you could go zap if I was the teacher.
Not disputing the need.
Not that that ever happened.
I'm questioning the cost because it's up fifty percent.
That's the quote that they gave me for the number of students that we had.
I can tell you from some of that software, because some of it was transferred, GoGuardian was not, but a lot of it has gone from district licensing to school-based licensing.
Individual licensing, which will be scuffed as well.
To add the cost. So you're saying the company, that is the change of the company's institute.
Screencastify is one, yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah, Screencastify is in here for thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, that was in Mary's budget.
So that got moved, okay.
It was a district license and now it's per user as well.
Veeam?
Which one?
Veeam?
Veeam is a, the software for backup, so I used to have Unitrends on there, and I got rid of Unitrends and I went with Veeam because it works better with the RB sphere.
WeVideo?
WeVideo is another software that we use, third grade and up. It's a photo editing or video editing software that they use for a bunch of projects.
Is this new?
So they were using it last year. Actually, I just redid the three-year, it was three years worth. So I think it was just in a different line.
WeVideo was a multi-year license before.
And then Marcia Brenner Associates, Power School plugins?
Yeah, those were just not put in there before. Those are plugins that we use for Power School for notifications or disciplines, stuff like that. So there's a few that we buy through them, and there's a yearly contract with them.
Okay. So it's new to the budget, not necessarily new to the district?
Yeah, yep, good way to put it.
Thank you.
Questions? Questions, comments? Tara? Tina?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So now I'd like to invite our Special Services Director, Sophia Fowler, to join us at the table, and we'll walk our way through the Special Services budget. So I know the board is familiar with this part of the budget. You, you have the cost to really educate and provide individual services that are required by law under IEP, so it's a, it's a tricky part of the budget to focus on, and remember that we do this based on current known students, but if a student were to move in tomorrow, we would have to pick those services off and find a way to do that. So it's always a, you know, going with that. It starts in eight months, and it has to last twenty months, and there are a lot of potential unknowns relative to special services. So Sophia?
Good evening. So I wanted to highlight, although that my slide says that there was an overall budget increase, we did have some budget decreases that we realized some savings in our ELL, GMS, and other locations that overall our district-wide professional services were up by a hundred and eighty-one thousand of that amount. Their hundred and thirty-four thousand of that was for tuition alone. Had the hundred and fifty thousand still been in the budget, it actually would have been a savings this year for that amount. So a hundred and eighty-one thousand is also due to overall contract increases due to student need. That alone has skyrocketed with the number of our, of our students in need. The sped transportation did go up. We've had a lot of rate increase kind of across the board with that. There were additional private placement runs that were added. Those runs are several tens of thousands of dollars in addition to monitors for the bus. Bus monitors are when students are having a particularly difficult time, there could be increase in behaviors and that kind of thing that make it actually unsafe for the bus driver to continue to drive. So the increase of bus drivers to our bus. There is a, if the repositioning of the school-wide district psych gets moved through, that there can be a savings for forty-five thousand dollars for professional services within the special education budget. Are there any questions?
I have a question about music therapy.
Music therapy?
Is it for one student or...
Page is on?
It's on page one. Music therapy is two thousand twenty-four dollars, and transportation is ten thousand dollars. That's more than summer school.
Music therapy?
Under three thirty.
Oh, plus mileage, so the music therapy comes in, that's group. There are...
Oh, all right, as long as, it just seems like it's one person.
Four, no, four preschool groups, a middle school group. They come from Manchester and specifically, it's actually a really good...
Well, it says music therapy for one individual. I'm like, okay.
Oh, no, so that line...
So then it looks like we're paying ten thousand dollars to transport the student to music therapy.
No, 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 the decrease to one less student, that goes with the line below it. So it used to be music therapy for two students, so that amount was doubled. So I was noting that the decrease to one less student, so it's only one student for two thousand dollars.
That makes perfect sense.
And the music therapy for...
I just wrote it wrong, or...
Yeah, preschool doesn't go to music class?
That's, I think it's great. They love music and dancing and all that stuff.
Doug, can you remind me what's in the reserve account for special?
I can bring that up, yep.
Thank you.
How many students we have outplaced at this time? No names of schools or anything like that?
Five was the last count. Uh, one was charter schools.
That, that's fine.
So in the special education capital reserve fund, we have a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Thank you. Plus some interest.
Can you repeat that, Doug? I'm sorry.
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight cents.
I just did round numbers.
For purposes of refreshing my memory, on the hundred and thirty-four thousand of that is for tuition alone, and that it, there was a cut last year of a hundred and fifty thousand, is that what that's related to?
So my, my recollection of the cut that was made last year was that there was a hundred and fifty thousand or so dollars in the reserve fund. So the feeling was that cutting that would not put the district in jeopardy because you have that money set aside that you could utilize. We have not yet had to utilize it, but it doesn't mean as we get closer to year end that we aren't going to withdraw that or come to the board and ask for permission to withdraw that. So that's something that we're watching, and...
If one kid moves in the district that needs outofplace?
That's it right there. Yep. And so what we're proposing is to restore that because these are known costs for educating our children, and if we don't restore it and we have to dip in and take it, we're in big trouble next year because then we have the known costs and no reserve fund. So our feeling is that we want to really save, that was intended to be a rainy day account, and we should save it for the rainy day when somebody moves in suddenly.
The capital reserve was intended to be the rainy day?
That's right.
And this is meant to be our anticipated...
These are actual costs based on actual known students projecting. So this brings that back, because even if we use it for actual current students this year, it'll still be depleted, and so, we need to bounce back?
Without getting into any personal detail, how many students are identified each year?
You mean the increased number each year?
Yeah, is there an increase?
So, yep, so actually did, brought you back some numbers. So in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the, which was a kind of a last normal year, there were two hundred and thirty, as of October first, two hundred and thirty special education students. Nineteen twenty, there were two hundred and thirty-three. The COVID year, twenty, twenty-one, there were two hundred and thirty-five, so in twenty-one, twenty-two was the same number. This year, we're up to two hundred and fifty.
Okay. So throughout the course of the year, and particularly still at the beginning of the year, my understanding is there are still children that are being assessed or potentially in the process of being identified. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so you don't have those actual numbers yet because they're not technically in your, they haven't technically been identified yet?
Correct.
But they're in mid-process, let's say?
Yes, and students move in from other locations.
Yeah.
That happens throughout the year.
I didn't bring my phone. What's the percentage of special ed students we have compared to our population?
That'd be twenty-one percent.
Roughly, we determined it was about twenty-three...
Percent of our students?
Twenty-three, twenty-four percent.
Does that include 504s?
No.
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 Plus 504. What's the state average?
State average is about twenty-five percent.
State...
State average is about twenty-five percent.
So we're under the state average?
We are under the state average.
But the percentage, I mean, just keep in mind, as the number goes from two, what was your first number?
Two thirty to two fifty.
But our overall enrollment is declining, so our percentage is going up as a function of that. However, we're still under state average number.
I wonder if some of this is a function of COVID too, because...
That's what I was getting at, yeah, because I feel like they're students right now.
Fairly even, and then...
Well, there was a lot of unfinished learning during COVID, definitely. Not the learning we would have hoped for, for our students, but I think we're doing a really great job of addressing those needs and meeting a lot of those needs. I think we're seeing a lot of children, you know, new children coming in at the very low preschool, kindergarten levels where before their parents kept them home over that timeframe, and now they're school-aged and coming in, and that's where we're...
And they either have preschool or anything like that to learn to hold a pencil?
A lot of those daycares were full, people didn't have access.
Because I'm thinking that 504s probably went up because of COVID, because of anxiety and non, non...
It didn't affect academics, so it would be not on IEP, but it was certainly...
But that makes perfect sense. These kids aren't going to preschool, two-year-old preschool, all that other stuff. I was just curious because it's an unbelievably number to me, even as a special educator.
We've received, um, we've received three different correspondents that I can recall off the top of my head, and since I'm in charge of correspondence, I pay attention to it, regarding special education funding and concerns from parents in the community regarding any cuts to special education budget. And obviously, I just wanted to give you a chance to respond to those concerns. Do you feel like the budget presented will allow you to meet the needs of our students, given where we are? And I know it's a very broad, general question, I'm, I'm, but I, I feel it's important to answer it because it is a concern...
Do we need to consider adding that back in? What's your read?
So I feel that the budget is, I feel that the budget can meet need. I feel it is a very bare bones budget with not a lot of wiggle room. It takes, you know, if, the cost of evaluations alone, I saw an increase, and I noted this through the budget, one of the budget lines went from a hundred and forty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty-three per hour, and that was not part of last year's budget. And I, you know, the number of referrals for that service significantly increased. They weren't budgeted for. So in this future budget, there's very little wiggle room, trying to keep the big perspective of making sure that I could provide as much of a level-funded budget as I could, stressed hard about it, but I think it meets need. There's definitely no wiggle room though.
If I can piggyback off that from the high school perspective as well, Liz, you mentioned if a student moved into the district, I'm concerned about current students, you know, with already being short paras, heaven forbid we lose one or two more paras. You know, that's one-to-one pair of support we're losing for some of our kids, and that's part of the IEP. So, you know, I, I get very concerned over special ed meeting needs on a daily basis, you know. So if we were able to have an emergency fund where we lose a pair, or we're able to do a contract service to bring another body in the building, that would be wonderful because no one's banging down the door to be a pair at the high school.
Anywhere.
Or an elementary.
Yeah.
And those contracts? Those contracts are extremely significant. You end up having to look at other personnel because direct support professionals are not something that you can find through a contract agency. So to fill that need, you're looking in different directions.
One of the conversations that we've had year over year, and I recognize you're new to the district, is that for special education, not disputing the need, not disputing the desire to have more than sufficient to meet your program needs, the challenge has always been it's over budgeted based upon what historical expenses were for the lines. And this is going back to over ten years from when I joined Budget Committee and well before me, but it's been the continued trend where we ask and we ask and we ask, but we, and we always say, what if? We always plan for the what-if, right? And I agree, we should be thinking about that, absolutely, and that's why we have that reserve account for that what-if scenario. The reality is, it hasn't happened.
So one of the things that I noted when I was looking very closely at the cost of protocols, that very much skyrocketed. The problem with protocols is you can't have, I'm going to say a glut, a lot in storage, because when evaluation tools, when a new one comes out, you have one year to use it, and then you throw it away. So I'll give you an example. When I was finding out what we had in the district for evaluation tools, I got an email back, we have a Woodcock Johnson, three. And I said, three? Well, the Woodcock Johnson four came out a few years ago, three went obsolete fourteen years ago, and that's what was in the district. I said, please throw it away. We can't use it. It's, it's invaluable, it, there's no value to it. So when you're looking at things like that, you have to make sure that you don't have so many protocols, that they're sitting on your shelf, and now you've wasted all this money on buying so many extras. We could have a glut one year of, of students come through that need evaluations, and we're buying them, the protocols to go with them because it's one, one per student. Or we get through a year, we didn't have as many evaluations, I've got twenty-five going into the next year. So you have to budget for that scenario of if we need it, then I have to have the money to buy it. But if I don't need it, great, okay, if there's a new, a new, like they update it, like from the Woodcock Johnson three to the Woodcock Johnson four, if they update it, I have to buy the new one. So now the money is there for me to buy the new one. Is that...
Sort of, I mean...
That's some of the money.
The rationale makes sense, and it makes sense across what you've presented, what the principals have presented, what curriculum was presented, what we're going to hear from the HR director tonight. It all logically makes sense. The big picture, though, is we're still faced with a massive increase, and we have to make tough decisions at some point, somewhere. And if it's a matter of looking at areas where historically they've been over budgeted, this is an area for me that comes up because it, it has been over budgeted, and it has been. We do have a reserve account for that what-if scenario. And I think the thing that changed for me last year, specifically with special services and special education, is that handshake agreement, or whatever we want to call it, where historically, we never really touched these particular lines because the idea was if they weren't utilized, then that was earmarked to be returned to the taxpayer, right, at the end of the year, good to go. That changed last year, which left it open to the conversation of reductions. So I don't know what the position is on that or what the thoughts are on that this particular year.
What year did that change?
Last year. So, I mean, it's uncomfortable, right? And I appreciate that, and I have no joy in saying that or talking about it, but the reality is, there's going to be reduction somewhere, right? We have a reserve account for this. If the idea is that this money is not, if we're comfortable leaving this money in the budget and then returning it to the taxpayer if it's not utilized, great, fantastic, right? That way, you're covered, and the taxpayer's covered. However, if at the end of the year, this is going to be put into the pool for encumbrances, which is what happened over this past year, then it's subject to the reductions.
I guess I have a couple-part question then. We talked about that there are students that are currently, have been referred in our mid-evaluation, haven't, are not determined yet whether they're going to receive services. Do we have an estimate on how many students that is?
It's still early in the school year.
No, I know, but I'm, the reason I'm asking is, my point of view on the reserve fund is that is for, in my view, and again, this is my personal view, that is for the out-of-town student that relocates in, that we can anticipate, that we had no idea this was coming, and we need to have money to be able to cover whatever services that student or student needs, students need. What I'm also seeing right now is we are clearly in, in our current population, ignoring anyone moving into the district, having an increase from fifteen of identified students with more potentially to come. And so I struggle with making any cuts to this budget after COVID, where social emotional well-being, I can't see how anyone, that's not fair statement, I'll strike that. I, I have difficulty seeing how anyone could argue that there wasn't an academic impact from COVID and therefore would translate into um, the need for services as for students increasing. There's just, I, I can't.
I agree, I agree with you, right? I, I do, full heartedly. And the way I'm looking at this is if it's over budgeted based upon history, and it is, right? Great. I also want to be able to meet the needs of the kids, and that's why my thought is I think this board should consider adding in the teacher that was reduced. Remove what the over expenses are, but add in the teacher to meet the needs of our children.
Where do you zero in on what's being over budgeted?
We wouldn't know where to add the teacher or what's.
No, it's on transportation. It's on special services, transportation, a hundred percent, and on the education itself.
What does that mean though?
On the, um, I'll find the exact line.
I think, I guess.
We have right now in, at LMS, four students in process of being identified. So that's four students that are, they may or may not qualify for services, but as of today, November third, four students are in process with more in the pipeline, parents reaching out possibly, not, I mean, it's a, it's a what-if. But that's just a question.
I think another factor to consider is we have a new special services director. And she's not the one who budgeted the last X number of years that you were looking at.
And I think one of the realizations too, so that, that what-if account, in looking at it this year, I presented back in September, whenever I, I met, first met everybody. Um, and I discussed the, um, twenty-one to twenty-two, the, the, from, there would be an impact. And there will be an impact from that. And so as we're looking at that rainy day, there's a, there's a factor for that too.
So when you say twenty-one to twenty-two, you're not talking about budget years, you're talking about the age increase?
So that there, the law changed. So now, now special education goes to twenty-one inclusive, which takes you to the age of twenty-two.
I don't, I understood it, but I just, the numbers are so close to the last couple of years.
Years, yeah.
But I don't want people to be confused.
Young person in our district for another year.
That requires services, that we are required to provide adequate education for.
Right there.
Right.
So the lines are on page one, the bottom of page one, five sixty-nine, of the district tuition. And on page eleven, five nineteen, transportation, all the way down to the bottom.
Well, I mean, I think right now we're hearing the budgets and we're not making motions at this point. Is that right? We're just, we're listening and so I, and asking questions and whatnot. So I think we're having a, a good conversation about this, but again.
We're going to go through budget by budget.
We are, yeah.
Just if I may, so if we go back to page one and look at five sixty-nine, three times in there, we talk about a five percent rate increase, which is coming from the service providers, right? So, uh, Lighthouse, RSCE, and Charter Schools have told us there's a five percent rate increase. You know, they have additional labor costs and so forth that are just being passed on to schools that are utilizing services. So that's not all of the amount, but that's a, that's a portion of it. And some of that is also the restoration of the cut, right? So that we can, if we have to dip into that reserve fund this year, then there won't be a reserve fund for next year to help offset any, anything that occurs there. And Heidi, your observation was spot on. It's somebody moving into the district. It's, um, somebody new being identified who's in district, but what you didn't say, and you know, the third scenario is somebody who's here now whose services greatly change.
That's true, yeah.
Goes into a, um, mental health crisis and cannot be in our schools, we need to educate that child.
We need to go to them.
That could end up being some of these expenses. So it's really kind of the trifecta of reasons that we have to be mindful of.
Sure. But, and again, my point was just, I don't think this budget, I don't think that capital reserve fund should be seen as a backup to general spending, in my view, particularly when I think all of us are on notice that there's going to be an increased need in, in special services. There just is. Um, so that was my point.
Transportation mentions a couple of great increases, but that's definitely the trickier one. We were strategizing today about ways to save money within that because it's.
Special education.
Yep. We were brainstorming, saying, what can we do? How, how can we approach this differently?
Going to buy a minivan and hire a driver?
We might, we might. If we had more time, we would have probably brought that forward this year, but we, we will probably be bringing that forward next year to buy a minivan. And, um, as long as that, that van is driven by a school employee, and as long as that van is not picking up or dropping off at the kid's home, but something, if they come in and they need to go, um, to St. Pinkerton or something like that, we can transport to Pinkerton. If they need to go out in the community to kind of learn the community skills.
It has to be cheaper. I watched the Alveron bus, that's like a thousand years old, and the teacher coming by with the big. But we can't do special services. There are wheelchair things. There are also just special gadgets in a wheelchair, in a special ed.
In some cases, but not all. Some students don't require that. So again, we're trying to get creative on that because it's just increasing. We understand that, but it is also an obligation.
One of the increases that I would just wanted to, to highlight, um, being a teacher in an elementary school, I noticed there was a big increase in CPI training. And for those of us who don't know what that is, I think that's an important thing to highlight.
So CPI training is crisis prevention intervention. Um, and CPI, what you, what you want to do is you want to be able to meet those students in need when they are having a moment. Um, and so, but you want to make sure that your staff are trained to be able to do so. So the CPI was always there. I pulled it out and made it more visible. Um, so previously, the renewal was under the special services director. I'm no longer, I'm not the CPI trainer. So this past year, we trained somebody, um, and who is providing that training.
In district?
In district. Yep. She's a, she's an in-district person. And so the books and everything for that were filed under a miscellaneous. Hold on. Uh, Districts Fed Miscellaneous is where the books were purchased. The training this past, the training this past spring that this person did, they changed the books, so all the books we have are obsolete. Then we changed the model to a hybrid model. So the previous model was two days in-person, which means you have to pay your staff for two days in-person. We can't come up with two days to rub together because that would be a million substitute teachers to train the staff so we could do CPI. We switched to a hybrid model, which is two or three hours online training prior to even going. If you don't do the online training, you can't go to the in-person training. The in-person training is seven hours where then you receive your certification. Because it's a hybrid model, there was a slight cost adjustment increase, but it saved us in subs, yeah, subs for the day. So even though it was increased, we were able to save those dollars. And the online training, there's still required books. So I pulled it out and did that. Now, the difference is a renewal and a recertification. A renewal is, a renewal is every other year, and then opposite those years is a recertification. So the recertification is the fifteen hundred instead of the two hundred. And then on top of that, there was the recommendation, as I was looking through, of actually getting a second trainer for the district. So that way we have somebody to go to a school to help with the de-escalation at a moment's notice if the one person we have is in a meeting or in the middle of testing. So having a second person, so that's the four thousand dollars is to say, hey, there is a need, an increasing need for students to have that crisis intervention, but there's also the increased need for the staff to have that discussion afterwards and that calm down. Because when you're in the thick of things, it's not pretty. Um, and so the staff need to be able to come down, did I do it right? Could I have done something different? And actually have those discussions and process through with the trainer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I had a question about the replacement receiver and audio shoe for FM system. I know in.
You were caught up in FM systems.
I know. Well, there, yes, I was asking questions about the FM. So that's different than what's in the school budget for the FM.
Interesting.
The teacher part portion, okay.
So what we have, we have a, yes, there are a number of students with hearing impairments in the school. And as their hearing devices change, their systems change. Um, I can tell you that we ordered one in July, and by the time we got to September, there was a cost, increased cost of five hu, uh, fifty dollars from July to September. So, um, that was a huge. So these are specific ones for special education kids.
Can I just mention that because it appeared in the GMS budget under the council record, and that's because it's five oh four, German, it's a special ed, and so it's just.
That makes sense. Got it. Okay. Well, is that Andrew? Any more questions coming? Thank you.
Thank you. I should have highlighted Sophia's first budget presentation. Chris is also, because we started Chris and Jan anyway, so I think they did okay for their first time up here. So they did great. So just, I.
You can see them all breathe a sigh of relief when they walk back.
See, I, I had them sit between us and prop them back up.
She doesn't need those extra microphones either.
So the last slide that I have tonight before we get to questions is really just this housekeeping one. So I know you got an email from Athletic Director Knight, uh, sort of explaining some more of the rationale behind the CHSPE teacher. And also the district-wide athletic director. So the increased cost, it would be assumed if we were to implement the model as presented. We have not put that in the budget. So the numbers that you are looking at does not include that. I just want to make sure that that's crystal clear to the board. And I don't want to lose sight of it because, you know, the, the other cuts that we have proposed have been taken out of the budget. So the numbers you're looking at include those cuts. But this, and the couple of ads, it was like ten thousand dollars worth of ads to offset the administrative assistance in the office and, what was the other one? Uh, the special ed team lead at the high school and middle school. So those are in the numbers that you're looking at, but these numbers are not. So it would require a motion and an ad in order to take action on those, so. So now we're at the question stage.
Um, Liz, when, okay, I'll run this. Okay. Any other questions from up here?
I feel like we asked him as we left.
Yeah.
Um, Sophia, could you just clarify, there was a, a big drastic decrease in psychological services in your budget.
School-wide site to a district-wide site. Currently, one of those services is contracted. And because it's a contract, it was for roughly sixty, over sixty thousand dollars. And so with the repositioning, you see that savings, but that drops so that we left an amount in there of roughly seventeen thousand dollars, so that if there's something that the district-wide physician needs help with or needs extra too, because they can't tackle everything that's coming down the pike, um, the money is there to be able to, to do that.
Okay.
That's realizing if the district-wide physician doesn't.
What page you on? Uh, five?
Nope. Um, it's actually on.
Like you see that?
Sorry, it was a big decrease. Flipped back to ground services, sorry. It was not right.
Oh, I see a decrease there.
Right, forty-five thousand dollars. It was just a sizable decrease, so I just wanted to make sure that we're still.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's if the physician goes through.
Okay.
Got it.
Are there questions from the budget, in Budget Committee?
Yeah, Community. Community.
Are you ready, getting ready to come up, or you're just repositioning yourself?
Where, so when, when the Budget Committee cut the hundred fifty thousand dollars last year from special ed, was that a bottom-line cut? I can't remember.
It was.
Where was it applied then? Was it applied to those tuition and transportation lines?
Exactly correct.
How are we doing in that budget this year? I mean, we don't really have, you know, year-to-date spending on, in, in that special services.
As far as out of district?
Well, how are we faring with that one hundred, that cut that was made, the bottom-line cut that was made last year? Are we?
I mean, as far as our district, we're going to go over what's budgeted for, Sophia, at this point, right? So we're just going to go over.
So we will probably have to dip into that rainy day fund this year.
Well, the, the, remember, within the special ed bottom line, there could be other savings, so that's why we can't. There's some likelihood that we're going to come back to the board and have to dip into that, but we can't say for certain yet because we're, we're not at that point.
Right. It's such a fluid budget.
I did a, a statement and a, a question. So Mr. Barker had asked a question a couple of months ago at one of our Budget Committee meetings about special services underspend from FY twenty-two. And so I just, I think it's important, like, that that's shared, because that was a part of that. The underspend from FY twenty-two was two hundred and ninety K for special services. And I know that cut was for FY twenty-three, but I think as a grand scheme, it's a part of those conversations. I think that's important context as well. My question I have, it, it might be maybe more for Chris and Mary. In looking at some of the software that was in there, specifically, I was looking at, I think Screencastify and something else. I know the state provides some video services for free. Um, I think it's California. Does that functionality do what Screencastify or other services that we have, it could be a potential cost savings, because the state provides those in the cost?
They only give you year one of it, and then you have to pay back.
I'm not familiar with it at all. Um, I know we've done, so again, we all kind of got caught up with, we started using Screencastify during. Yeah. And so it's something that we've done a lot of training, a lot of, uh, a lot of our teachers are using and using regularly with our kids. Our kids are, which is one of the reasons that we're, we try to weed out anything that we can get from. I know the state has added a lot of platforms, um, and we try to weed out what we can and what we can't get for free. This is just one that we're going to work into, and it's very familiar with, so I'm hesitant, and I'm not, at this point, I'm not familiar with.
It's not a huge number, it's still a bit.
California.
Similar to Screencastify. Okay, yeah, we video is a little bit heavier hitting, so I probably wouldn't solve it, but, um, yeah.
Are you sure they offer it year after year for free? Because I've seen the state offer, during the pandemic, they offered a digital service, and I don't remember what it was, but it was only for one year. So you get hooked, and then you have to pay for it yourself.
I know this one's still twenty twenty-five.
Through twenty twenty-five? Okay. Any other?
We haven't tried to address that, so I can't think that's it. That was not something I was aware of.
Any other questions?
I know one of the ideas last year, um, one of the reasons for adding one of the special teachers, I think it was at CHS last year, was to reduce, hopefully, hopefully some tuition. And so now you want to reduce that, special teachers, I guess, did you change strategies? Did you not realize?
So I don't think it was to reduce out, out of district placements. It was to, um, currently we contract with a company for transition services. And to replace that company with a teacher so that we're providing those services in-house instead of constantly having to contract. When it's a singular student, it doesn't seem like huge dollars. When you tack on two or three students at a time, it's big dollars. So, um, the realization of hiring a teacher is what that is going to lead to.
Okay. Was that pieces?
Correct.
Okay. And then you're not realizing that anymore? Is that why you're trying to give it a, or you're trying to reduce a teacher, or was it not working out?
No, she's, she's still in the position.
Okay, so that is working. You just don't need another case manager? Is that why they're reducing?
Correct, realigning to look at, um, the provision of services the way it was now.
So springing off of Mr. Barker's question.
So springing off of Mr. Barker's question, Dr. Jerry, if I remember correctly, Liz Vanderski and yourself had also mentioned that, that new teacher last year, the idea was that person was going to become a specialist in, in, up in a particular program. And there was the benefit that other school districts that may not have that skill set could send students to our school district and thus offset, or we're not seeing that that may not, obviously, one year is not enough time, but are you seeing that that may not come to fruition?
So we have not seen any outreach from other districts to offering somebody else. So that has not been realized.
And then one other question, not related to, to special services. Am I correct in understanding that there's a reduction in force in the office staff for Campbell and LMS, but not GMS? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So then when we talked about the tech integrators, a critical point of that pitch and that plan was that all three schools must be the same. And you did that whole level setting of all the positions, number of hours, things of that nature. Why did that rule apply then, but now, when you're looking for savings, does that rule not still apply where if it happens to one school, it could happen to all three schools?
So I'm not sure what you mean about the tech integrator. We certainly asked for three tech integrators initially.
Yes.
Um, and then we were able to put two on the warrant, and the voters approved one.
Correct. And part of that program, you then at that point level set it so that all receptionists had the same number of hours. All admin ones and admin twos, all got shuffled, so that, that the, the point that was hammered home was all three schools must be identical as far as office staff is concerned. Now we're deviating from that.
So let me, let me explain the why of that.
Okay.
So the initial reset on that was because there was no continuity between the offices. And I'd have to pull the spreadsheet up to see exactly what it was, but the services provided at Campbell, the middle school and the high school, there was no continuity. So we wanted to get a reset, make sure that we had common number of hours, which was a school year receptionist in each building for six hours, six and a half, six and a half. Um, and then a thirty-seven hour, thirty-seven and a half hour administrative assistant and a forty-hour administrative assistant. So we hit that stride, and we achieved that in all three schools. What we've now learned, having done that, is that, um, the high school and the middle school, we believe can function with the two office staff members that we're proposing. And Griffin is different. And here's what we've learned that is different about Griffin, is that there are, um, it's kind of two factors. It's that there are more grades. You have four grades at the high school, you have four grades at the middle school, and you have five grades plus pre-K at the elementary school. So that is a difference. The other piece that we've realized is that, um, there's more student agency at the middle school and the high school level, so students are able to come and go on their own at the high school, for example. At the elementary school, there are more, um, parent visits because students are younger. The other piece is physically, the way the office is laid out at Griffin, is not the same as it is laid out at the high school and middle school. So when you come in, you're in a secure area, you can interact from that secure area directly with the office. And at Griffin, the secure area is across the hallway, and so it requires an extra level of attention to interact. So this realignment, which we've talked about with the administrators, achieves what we believe is the right level of staffing now that we have it. And do you remember, Holly, when we did that, Griffin gained hours, didn't they? I think the initial thing, Griffin gained hours.
One position, one administrative assistant position gained hours from thirty-seven point five to forty. The second position remained at thirty-seven point five. And then they had another full-time, full-year administrative assistant at thirty-seven point five hours. That was reduced to a reception position.
So overall, it was a reduction. So if, if, if you go back to the way it was before that proposal, it was, it was a reduced number of hours at Griffin that we now feel is the right number of hours.
Can you clarify, are you increasing that second administrative assistant to forty hours as well? In C, at CHS and LMS?
Correct. So it's a reduction of a receptionist, and it's an increase of two and a half hours for the second administrative assistant.
That's on one of your slides in the beginning.
Yeah, I remember that.
Remember that?
I just have to go back and-
I could search for it, but.
That was three meetings ago, so.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, that's why I need to see it again.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Back out of the question. Would it be fair to say, looking at like actuals in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that the increase of one thirty-four is really just giving it back to the actuals, because we cut a hundred fifty thousand last year? Plus five percent increase? But for the transportation, transportation is a much bigger jump. Is that, I mean, a hundred and seven thousand dollars, because that was, that was cut last year. Is that increased students or increased costs?
So the, the line RSEC, that's an umbrella for two different schools. So page one.
Yeah.
RSEC is actually two different schools.
Okay.
So they're in two different locations. One is in Amherst, one is in Deerfield. So when you go back and you look at page twelve, you will see for RSEC and the one for Longview and the one for Lighthouse.
And those are all up?
So when you have, um, transportation costs for, for out of district, is it more of a yearly rate that you got, contract that you go with, or is it more, or are they ever like multi-year? Because I think that could be some of the-
I think it follows the contract.
For the, for the student?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the first, yeah, first student, kind of, I, I'm not entirely sure. I know that one of them had a rate increase of eleven dollars a day, which were the two buses, so that first line transportation.
And that's just in-town busing rate? Yeah.
I think out of town could be more fluctuating because it's yearly contracts where.
Oh, so it's not included in our, in our standard contract?
In the past, in the past, she was able to leverage sharing with, like, they were in schools, like, we're both, if we and Hudson were sending the lighthouse, then they could share runs. So some of it was the unpredictability of could be partnered with a different one.
Anyone else?
I know electricity question. See, if you're budgeting at forty-five cents a kilowatt hour, can the district not get like a long-term contract? Like, I know, like, whenever source increase their rates, I'm contracted for thirty-six months at like fifty cents for direct energy. Can you guys not lock in at current rates?
So we're locked in for a year, um, from this December to the next December.
Okay, so it's the second half of the year then.
So, um, but I am gonna make a phone call to see if we can lock in even more. I, I think by locking even more, we're gonna be historically up higher than, than we might want to be. But now looking at forty-five cents, it still might be worth it, like, to go to the taxpayers and say, hey, you know, we might be at twenty-two cents for, for the next two years, lock it in. I don't know. I don't know if it'll be twenty-two cents. And historically, when you're paying six or seven cents, like, well, why would you be at, at twenty-two cents? But I think now, in the current condition that we're in, if we can get twenty-two cents for, for two years, I think that could be a win, even if, for whatever reason, a year from now, if electricity goes down less than twenty-two cents, the goal would be that people wouldn't be like, okay, they, you know, they try to even it out instead of jumping up two cents.
That number might change before, this is all said and done.
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a phone call to see if we can extend our, which is a new contract for, which we locked in about two months ago, um, for this December to next December, see if we can extend that.
So Doug, if you did that, then those, that facility's cost could potentially go down?
Yes, yeah. And that would be great, because to have to kind of budget around energy decreases that much is not where anybody in education wants to budget. So, yeah.
But to, to be clear, it's half a year at the seventeen cents that we're locking in, half a year at the forty-five. Half a year at the forty-five that makes us really second guess, but we, we have work to do on that.
So where did the forty-five come from?
Our energy consultant told us she is forty-five.
So we actually haven't talked to any suppliers to determine a forty-five cent.
We have not talked to suppliers yet.
Right, because, yeah, I would encourage you to do that, because I see forty-five, and it's not anything near what I'm seeing anywhere else. So I would encourage you to tighten up that some more.
Are you saying it's gonna be higher or lower?
I would say it's lower. Forty-five, I think, is-
You think that's too high?
I, yeah. But I would-
And our energy consultant, what is his, like?
Well, he's, he's in the field.
Right.
He is reading stuff all the time, looking at projections, and he has said forty-five cents is what he thinks we should plan for. But to Carrie's point, Doug is gonna try to see, you know, so if you take our current, uh, contract at the seventeen, you know, what if they were to come back and say, we'll do it two years, but it'll be at twenty-five cents? That's better than forty-five. You have to play that out, but remember, that's only forty-five at a half, and that's not even real. We don't know exactly what that's gonna come in at. So it's all, um, you're all just guessing.
So then the second question I would have on that is, are there termination clauses that allow you to, like, escape clause from it? Because I know when I did mine at my residential, I could, yes, it's a contract, but I could switch at any point with no penalty. So just because you have a three-year contract, does that mean you truly locked in for three years, price dropped? That would be good to know.
Yeah, I wouldn't have that answer right now.
No, absolutely.
Any other questions from the audience before I ask? I have one more, so that's why.
Yep.
Okay. Um, you have a proposed budget here. We're going to review it to finalize it, which would then be the proposed budget that goes to the budget committee to do whatever they're gonna do with it. If between, and I believe there's three or four budget committee meetings that are set aside to deal with four. If between now and then, something changes in the budget for special services, where four, uh, three out of the four that, of the kids that are currently being reviewed or added, can we adjust this budget, or because the school board has voted on it?
Do we need to reapprove it?
How does that work? I, I just don't know how, I guess, how has it worked in the past? Has that been something that's been fluid up until?
So my recollection from last year is that, uh, there were school board adjustments made while it was in front of the budget committee. So we're, Doug and I are, um, attending meetings, four of them, it sounds like. I think there's a fifth one, actually, to talk about warrants. And so if the school board were to take action, we would walk in and say, okay, we've had an adjustment, and here's what it is. And then the budget committee, that doesn't change their work, because they just have a different number, and they have to decide whether they accept that adjustment. But, um, but it's something that I think the budget, you, you can't change it on the last night.
No, and I, and again, I'm not, I don't want to do that, but if we have, again, at one school, four, maybe, let's say it applies since across the three schools, and it's twelve, which again, I'm just, it's total speculation at this point. But even a quarter of them end up with services, that could dramatically adjust this budget.
John David.
And JD wanted to-
Yeah, yeah.
So, hi, so we do have four meetings, and the way our flow, just the way we're planning on our flow working is next Thursday, the tenth, we have a review. It was basically the tenth and the seventeenth, a review. It's an opportunity, much like we do with the town, to ask questions. We're not expecting full presentations, but it's gonna be an opportunity to dig deeper and for folks to ask more questions. Voting does not actually start on the school budget until December first, after Thanksgiving.
So we have time.
So in my opinion, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but in my opinion, while we're doing those reviews, if you made slight adjustments to the town to that as well, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Okay.
I would not want to see, like, I think by, probably by Thanksgiving.
Yeah, no more, we're done, yeah.
Locked in so that we have time going into that December first meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect.
I, I just kind of wanted an idea of that, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Because I'd be interested in what Doug finds out about electricity, and that needs to be adjusted.
Well, and I have some, some, I mean, some personnel, you know, questions still that I, I don't feel comfortable asking in this forum, but I'd want to find out more about, um, reorganization and realigning things before I make a, make a motion.
There have been years, again, me serving on the budget committee,
Yeah.
where if there was a reduction, and after a period of time, say by late December, January, if it just wasn't right, if it didn't feel right, it was presented, hey, this is really detrimental to the district, there have been years where we've added that money back in, right? And I think if you just keep that mindset, right? It's not the end-all be-all until it's actually at the budget hearing and then going to print.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
That answered your question.
That did answer my question.
Anyone else? So, Andrew, any questions?
No questions.
At this point, I'd like to go through the budget.
Well, I think we're going, I have a question, so I'm sorry.
I can find, no.
Mine is a procedural question. I see on the agenda that there's a non-public session. Is that something we need to go into prior to?
Is that now?
That's where it would fall. It, I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't say.
I would vote and then go into non-public.
So let me just, we left that because if there was a personnel question that you felt, um, we needed to have in non-public, we have that ability to do it.
Okay.
But we can certainly hold off and have non-public at the end, if we even need it.
Well, we have an audience, and I'd like to go ahead and move through and get the voting done. And then if we have questions, we can ask them.
That's typically what we do.
Just checking. Okay. Go for it, Liz.
All right. We're all done with questions.
Just in terms of procedure, no, no questions.
No, no, um, go ahead.
Except for, um, except for one line item, I don't have any motions on the individual budgets. My presentation, as I reported to the board last night, was more top-level and looking at various sections.
And your question about, uh, technology was answered plus some.
That's the one, that's the one item that I have, but if somebody else wants to do it, go ahead.
Oh, no, you go ahead. I thought that was awesome last night, but I, no offense, I like yours better. Um, Campbell High School. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four draft budget to send to budget committee. Is that a motion? Sure, okay.
All those in favor?
Well, so discussion?
I know. Actually, I was going-
Is that where you're going?
I made a motion.
There's a motion in the section, then there's a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping that would be, okay.
How is it compared, Jake?
Your motion should be for the bottom line of budgets.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because if we go back and look at the, um, if we go back and look at individual sections that can be applied, it could impact each of these sections.
Okay.
So I think what we need to do-
So just individual lines?
Is just go, is go through page, is go through each section. If anybody has it, great. If not, we move on, and then do the bottom line again.
Okay, that's fine too.
That's how it's done in the past.
Is that, that's how it's been done in the past, right? Yeah.
I mean, there have been times when the board has, has voted on each individual section along the line.
Which is what I thought we were gonna do, yeah.
It's up to you, but then you go back and change it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you have to revote.
Right.
Let's just do line by line.
Okay.
So I'm gonna throw this out there. Um, on page one of CHS, I, I see a lot of money in there for cartridges and paper and, you know, I'm gonna throw a, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to reduce that line item by two thousand dollars. Because I think that we should be moving toward digital.
I'm sorry, which one?
What, my number?
Um, sorry, page one of CHS, line six, ten, supplies.
Can I enter, can I?
Yes.
So I would think-
No, was it seconded?
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Now we can-
Until we look at a better copy lease system, we have zero color printers in that building, and there are things that still need to be done on paper. I completely agree with going digital as a way.
Yeah.
But until we have a better copy lease system, I would really encourage you to not reduce those lines, because A, toner is already hard enough to get as it is. We're down to one printer right now at the high school, just waiting on toner for the second printer to come in. So some of those colored copies in the rooms are the only printers we have to use right now. And so cutting the lines on those while, while we still have our current, I would highly discourage doing that. That would really impact, um, there's still a lot of things that have to be done paper in, in, in high schools. Math is huge, um, you know, our, our, uh, world language is, I just, I understand.
Yeah.
Um, I, until we come up with a better copy lease system, I would highly discourage cutting that, those lines.
I appreciate the motion. Um, when I look at supplies and as presented last night, it's flat year over year. So I'm sensitive to, to making that up.
I, all I know is my, my kid came home last year literally with this amount of paper in the, in the backpack. Actually, both of them did. And I just think there's a lot of stuff that could, that could be moved to digital.
I think you're right, but I also think there is validity in having kids write, handwrite things, even at the high school.
And a lot of those cartridges, to Jen's point the other day about doing their awards-
In a lot of those cartridges, to Jen's point the other day about doing their award stuff in-house, this allows us to print a lot of those NHS things, a lot of our end of the year, a lot of that can happen in-house because of those systems that we have.
All right, motion in a second.
I had a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained. Okay. Page two, three, tell me when to stop. Regular education programs, math education. One ten. Any questions? Motions?
Um.
Page?
I'm, I'm back on page three again, sorry, six-ten supplies under English education. I think we talk about this every year about the, you know, the Post-it stickies and sticky easel pads and things like that. Do we have other, other ways to, you know, collaborate and share things and put things up on the wall? And, you know, I, I recognize the benefit in doing those kinds of activities, but a thousand dollars on, on those kinds of things just seems excessive.
Yeah, and I'm gonna say, yes, we do. I'm also gonna say that I think that's a horrible description for what.
What it actually is, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, and again, as, as I get more comfortable with this, the process and system that the district uses, those will get cleaned up over time.
Okay, thank you. So there's more to it than easel pads and sticky notes, all right, thank you.
Page four, page five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you can, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty.
Would it be, I'm just mindful of time going through page by page, would it just be easier to go by topic and say, does anyone have any motions? And then people can say what motions they have and we can go, direct us to the page, just to.
All right, we've gone at all different ways.
I like listening to Liz count.
We haven't done so many different ways before, I remember that.
You're a very good counter.
It's all right, thank you. Does anyone have any motions on the Campbell High School proposed budget?
Hold it, Campbell or LMS? I thought we just finished it.
We haven't finished Campbell.
Oh.
We went back.
We went page by page.
We went thirty pages.
I said there are any motions to approve.
I thought we were gonna do a second.
I thought, you wanna do the, all right, LMS, GMS is next.
LMS is next.
LMS was that?
LMS is next.
Not in my book.
Yeah.
Sorry, hold on, GMS, LMS.
You can skip right over mine, please.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or motions for?
I just wanna be, on page one of LMS, six-ten supplies, uh, Principal Grantson, you had mentioned a two-hundred-and-ninety-four reduction.
Grantson.
Is that, I believe that's a motion that needs to happen to reduce that. Cause that is not reflected in the budget that we have.
Right, cause I did click save and up time.
Right, so that, that's a dollar.
I, I showed two-oh-four.
Uh, two-ninety-four, it's three-forty-eight times forty-two versus three-fifty-five, Jen said.
So a reduction of two-ninety-four from that line.
I will, I will, so then I'll have two motions. I'll make a motion to, to reduce line six-ten supplies from LMS by two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars.
Is that under world languages or some other place?
That's under six-ten supplies.
Six-ten supplies, page one.
Regular education.
I know, but there's three of them on page one. Oh, regular education, okay, thank you.
I'll second, if it wasn't already seconded, discussion.
Thank you, it wasn't.
There wasn't a second, you were the second. Uh, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Did you see here if you had another motion?
Not for LMS, it's for technologies. It's gonna happen.
Does anyone want?
Anyone have any other questions? No, Phil? Motion?
We don't have a motion.
Oh my God, what is wrong with me tonight, I'm sorry, you're nice.
We're jumping on to GMS.
GMS, motions for GMS.
None, for me.
No, no. None from me.
Maybe we should just, we should fund GMS, just zero it out.
Zero it out.
I wanna see Mr. Mitchell sweat a little bit.
Okay.
All right, what do you think, so?
Curriculum.
Curriculum. I'm all set with the questions, anyone else?
Nope, curriculum's a tough one to swallow because of the costs increased, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't wanna make cuts that impact students.
Technology that's.
There you go, Andrew.
I got one, I got one. I'll give somebody else the option though, if they'd like.
I will reduce, is line, line, uh, line five-thirty-one?
You got it.
All right, like to reduce that line by sixteen thousand five hundred.
Second.
All those in favor?
That's telephone. That's the one that, yeah, they said they got a better deal on.
This is the one that our, our IT director had explained this evening and agreed that there was savings there that he had identified.
Yes. All those in, go ahead. No, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
No.
Motion in a second, let's go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, abstained.
It's like you guys are in five different rooms right now.
I know. Check, you know, the technologies, our twelve. Services.
Special services.
Special services, motions for special services.
So I do have two motions for special services, I can do it here because we're in the, we're in this budget. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to reduce, so page one, line five-sixty-nine, out of district tuition. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to reduce that by one-hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Special services.
Yeah.
Page one.
Yeah.
Five-sixty-nine, motion to reduce by one-hundred thousand dollars.
And the rationale is?
Well, I'll second it for conversation, and then we can get the rationale.
Yep, your rationale.
Thanks for the second.
Gotcha.
Look, I mean, we, we talked about it, um, tonight, and this is one that has historically, every year, been over-budgeted and never spent. And unless this board makes a decision to say, hey, for special services, if it's, if it's underspent, that that's money we can earmark to return to the taxpayer at the end of the year, I think it's subject to the same review and same budget philosophy as all the other budgets. And because it is over-budgeted year over year over year, um, that's why I'm making the motion. To get it in line with what's actually spent on that line.
You would withdraw the motion if we agreed to give the remainder?
Well, that, that's just going back to past practice.
Correct.
Which changed last year.
Past practice that the board was not aware of.
I agree.
In pre, previously, so.
All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion on that?
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, do we wanna discuss, like, okay, how does everybody feel about giving the money back?
I think there was just a call for the vote, right?
Oh, sorry.
There was a call to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained.
So I don't think it's too late to discuss that. Um, how do you all feel about giving the money back?
I would like to give the money back.
I would too.
To keep it all the same.
I don't understand, I'll be honest, I, I've been on the school board for a year and a half, I don't understand it.
So this is one that if we would go back to the handshake agreements that we've talked about.
Back to when?
This is. Last year, right, last year, um, I believe it was Mrs. Harrison, right? You had brought it to the Budget Committee at the time, just giving everyone the level of understanding, where we should document handshake agreements.
Correct.
Which I still believe, and that was, and that was.
Let me finish, such as the one that we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
And that was declined, right?
That was decided not to proceed, right, with, with documenting it. Uh, however, I do think the board can make its own decision, our own document signed by the board members, right? And says anything in special services, right, that is budgeted and not spent, that money will not be encumbered at the end of the year, it will be returned to the taxpayer.
What, what happened in the last year, that you referenced the last year, what was that used for?
LMS Q B, it was, it was encumbered for a construction project, which is what triggered the discussion.
Yep.
Okay.
So it was used to offset, uh, other expenses.
It was the first time that I can recall that money not being directly returned to the taxpayer, which triggered the discussion of the handshake agreement, and yet it had been documented every year in meeting minutes during Budget Committee season, during the discussion of special ed.
My thought is, it's there if we need it, and if we don't need it, give it back.
So that can be.
Mine too, and I would like to see, I honestly would like to see these things put in writing, and even, yeah, if it's not, if it's not signed by the Budget Committee, I think it would be worthwhile. And basically, I, I feel like whatever board is going through the Budget Committee or the budget process every year should reaffirm those commitments because the board changes.
And it should be like in March or early April.
Doesn't, wherever.
Yeah.
So ju- just a comment, I think, you know, special education is one of the hardest things to budget for. So I can see, you know, kind of the reasoning behind this deal and respect the reasoning behind this deal. Um, we are still, though, you know, last year we had to use fund balance to offset the revenue, uh, the expenses. That could happen again this year. So while I, I, I think, I, I definitely understand the theory, but I don't know where we're gonna be at the end of this year.
This is for fiscal year twenty-four.
Twenty-four, that's true. Should be better by then.
We.
Thank you for that clarification, yes.
Just, just one other clarification though, and this does predate Andrew being on the school board. What the board had recognized is that our facilities have not been kept up, uh, that there are needs in those buildings, and the board had tasked us with utilizing the funds we have available to address needs in our facilities, right? So we had a meeting today with our Teachers Association, and we heard about, uh, facility needs that are ongoing. And, you know, the board, I think, recognizes the elementary school project has been kicked down the road for thirty years. And there are ongoing needs, so none of it was a grab of money. It was, it's a bottom-line budget that we need to utilize to get after things that we need to do. And so all of this was behind the conversation, and the direction that the administrative team was given was fix things. And so we have been trying to do that, but, uh, and, and you are correct. It was, can we just reduce this to writing because it's really hard, changes in personnel. I had a conversation today with a brand-new business administrator and a brand-new special ed director, and I said, let me prep you for a conversation tonight, it's gonna be about handshake deals.
Ah, you saw it.
I knew where we were going, I filled them in on all of this, and they're looking at me like, there's handshake deals? I'm like, well, I don't know, we don't know anybody who actually shook hands, but we just know there's a legend of a handshake deal. And what, our effort last year was to get this reduced in writing so that we have clarity around what it is we're trying to do.
So it doesn't have to be a budget pending policy, it can be a board policy or document, right?
My thoughts on it are, I don't feel that I am equipped or have the knowledge to weigh in on whether or not it was the right decision, whether or not that handshake agreement was valid, whether or not that applies throughout. If we're talking about making a commitment for the FY twenty-twenty-four budget to say that any overs, underspend on the special services would be returned, I feel comfortable making that commitment because that is a specific year, a specific time, we all know about it.
So let's do it a year in advance.
So that's how I, I personally feel about it. I can't weigh in on whether or not handshake agreements from the nineties, you know.
Or other ones that we don't even know about.
I, I can't and I won't.
Let's stick to the one that we're talking about.
Right, I think that's the, going forward, what I can commit to is the twenty-twenty-four budget, and then we, we do that.
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion that we will, this board will put together a document signed by the five board members that any monies remaining within the special services budget for fiscal year twenty-four not spent will be returned to the taxpayer. That's inclusive of transportation as well as out of district tuition, all the lines.
Okay.
But can you commit a future school board to that allocation?
That's my question.
By stranding it tonight, you're committing a school board in twenty-twenty-four to that agreement, can you legally do that?
Right.
That's a good point.
And that is where it fell apart, honestly.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I'd like to see in writing that you're all agreed to that.
Okay, so how about we do this, can we table this?
Next year, there's only one member up, so it'll still be.
But if the principle is, can you commit some, a future board to a current action?
But can we table this discussion and get a legal opinion on that?
Yes.
I'm looking at, I'm not looking at, I'm looking at here, is that something we can do to?
Before January, uh, December first would be helpful.
Yeah.
So.
No, before Thanksgiving.
I, I don't think we need a legal opinion, I'll tell you why. I think what you're doing is you're setting a policy statement.
We're setting an intention, yeah.
You're setting a policy, and policies can always be changed by a future board, right?
That's true.
I mean, here's the policy, but I think you're putting into practice that the policy is, when budgeting, this is the intent. And then a, a future board can review that, and if a future board says, we don't wanna do that, there'll be a response, won't there? Cause there was a response to this. So a future board is gonna say, what will the response be if we revolt or don't follow this policy? So I think we don't need a legal opinion, we can draft a policy up, get it approved. Uh, it doesn't need all your signatures on it, it becomes a policy of the board that this is in budgeting what you're trying to do. So that's my thought.
I just want a record of the board members because everyone forgets, right? Who, who was, who was on the board back then?
Well, it'll have a document.
I will never forget this year.
I, I, I mean, I really do think, I, we talked about this today with the Teachers Association, um, when we met with the ELEA. I, as a board member, I constantly struggle between my obligation to the students and to education as also my obligation to be a responsible taxpayer. And so where I can make a commitment for a future year to return underspend and, and make that clear, so it isn't this, oh, there was a handshake and it was twenty years ago and so-and-so said so. I think this makes it clear, I think it sets the expectation, but it doesn't bind future boards.
They can change the policy.
Right.
I agree.
All right, so we have an action.
It sets the precedent too.
All those in favor?
Well, it doesn't set a precedent, it's just.
So we're gonna, allow me to amend my motion.
Yes, please.
I will amend my motion for this board to put in a policy for a one-year period that allows the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four special services budget to be returned to the PAC taxpayer if underspent.
Okay, I'll second that.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Five, zero, zero.
Who's second?
I think.
Tara. I stayed quiet so Tara could second it.
I looked right at her. All right, we're on to food service, is that what you have next?
Yep.
Food service. Motions?
All right, food service.
I'm all set with food service, food service.
How much did food service make last year? I mean, are they, they're gonna break even this year, correct?
Well, hang on, they, uh, so last year with all the money that was provided by, uh, federal funds due to free lunch for all students.
Yep.
They came out about a hundred thousand dollars in the black, so they were, they did have some money. Uh, we are working very hard and closely, with Lauren, to try to, um, break even because the goal is zero, the goal is not to make money and the goal is not to lose money, is to even out. So that's our expectation and what we're striving for. But remember, it had run in deficit for three years prior.
Yep.
So as we go back to normal, where it's families pay, that's why we're asking about the vending services and ways that she can increase revenue in order to help to break that, and she does have that buffer, because food service is an area where you can carry forward the positive revenue that you have. So she has, she's up by that amount. Our hope is that it's gonna still be up at the end of the year, but the other thing is food costs have escalated. You saw that on the internet about lettuce, right, because it's gone up drastically, so.
Seventy-five dollars a case?
Seventy-five dollars a case for lettuce.
Andrew, did you have a question?
Nope.
Oh, okay, anyone else?
We have some changes that we wanna make, and the negative, they were partly because of the saving, when you have to save like four different times. So, and partly because something was meant to be taken out, and it just wasn't taken out. So on page one, for 580 travel, we want to erase all the Director's Travel National Conference, so take away the thirteen hundred, so taking away thirteen hundred from 580 on page one. So that would bring that down to two hundred.
If we could table that to the end, because I am intending to make a motion on all travel across, in all conferences and workshops across the budget.
Can you tell us what your motion will be, the total amount?
My motion will be a twenty percent reduction across all travel in all conferences and workshops. So for, sorry, just lost my, for conferences and workshops for 272, a twenty percent reduction is equal to 6,442.
What was that second number?
The travel lines 580 across the entire budget, twenty percent reduction is 4,782.
That will impact some lines differently, because some of them are contractually obligated.
Yep.
So you would do a blanket to all, all 580 lines, but you would allow us to go back and apply it?
That's right.
So we could take thirteen hundred out of this line, and nothing out of Mary's line, for example?
That's right.
Okay, you don't wanna straight twenty out of every line?
No.
As long as we achieve that dollar amount?
Absolutely correct.
Then I, I think.
Which is consistent with what I've done every year for the last ten years.
So I'm not gonna assume the Board will approve that motion, but we can work with that, because like this line, we're prepared to take the thirteen hundred, so we'll, we'll be strategic in the way we deploy.
Man, I can make that motion now, it doesn't matter whether I make it now or later, it's the same motion. So that's the rule of the Board.
Maybe we just do it, because if it fails, it puts the whole question.
That's why I brought that up.
Put it to mind, right?
I will make a motion to reduce 272 across the entire budget by six thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars for awareness.
Two seventy-two or 580?
Uh, what did I say? Yeah, two seventy-two.
Two seventy-two.
Conferences and workshops.
Okay.
I'll wait for a second before I come.
Dollar amount again.
Six four four two?
Six four four two.
So that's not travel, that's conferences and workshops.
Travel will be second, that'll be another.
Can you?
So I'll make, I'll make a second for discussion.
Thank you, so as presented last night, conferences and workshops in the budget, in the entire budget, is thirty-two thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. This is a six thousand four hundred and forty-two dollar reduction to thirty-two thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars that's in the budget.
What, I don't have your spreadsheet in front of me, Andrew, what is the, what was the total spending last year? What is the total increase?
Total spending for 2022 actual was fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-one actual, again, those are two off years.
Right.
Twenty-one actual was twenty-one thousand, twenty actual was twenty-eight thousand. This puts it down to twenty-six thousand.
Can I, I'm gonna ask another question, what is, what impact would that have on?
Yeah.
On the, yeah, well, isn't there, aren't we contractually obligated to?
I, I can speak to two lines, I have two seven, two, two seventy-two lines. One of them is our District Y Conference and Workshop line, so it falls under my budget, but I don't ever go to the District Conferences, I usually use that to offset teacher costs to go to AP training and things like that, which is a line I already took reduction in this year.
What training?
AP, Project Lead the Way, anything that I can't get grant funded, I have a little buffer for, to be able to support teachers going to.
Okay.
Um, the other, so that's not contractually obligated, but.
That's enriching for the teachers, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Personally, it's an important line, but the others, two seventy-two line I have is our LSSA Conference and Workshop line, which per contract is twice last the FY 22 distribution, so that is, so eight thousand five hundred of that total comes from my thirty-five hundred of it is contractual obligation.
Mike, what does it say in the admin contracts about conferences and travel?
I'm not sure it says anything, I think it's signed. It's a good question.
I think it's just been something that we've, that the Board has generally supported, and it's possible to be able to.
Can I ask a clarification question, Drew? Does this supersede the vote that you already took to approve? You're now going back and cutting from three schools and parties to approve the budget, though.
We haven't approved any.
We haven't approved, we're doing that at the end.
They passed that by.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, they didn't actually take the vote.
Yeah, that's where I got.
That's why we didn't do that.
Gotcha, okay. Now I'm with it.
It's been some late night.
On our fourteen votes.
So. So fiscal year 22, it was twenty-one thousand, is that what I'm seeing?
So it was twenty-eight thousand?
Some of fiscal year 22 actual expenditure from Andrew's sheet.
It's fourteen.
This one says twenty-one thousand.
And then twenty-eight.
You're adding in travel, right?
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, that's travel, so fourteen nine sixty.
Just conference workshops, yeah.
And so we're basically requesting double.
Again, and as the superintendent started yesterday's, or Tuesday's presentation with, right, twenty-one and twenty-two were not normal years, so.
Your fewer offerings as well, and we have.
Right.
Three, you know, forgive me for saying this, but new administrators at each of our schools, who, I know Dan hasn't been to, I mean, you haven't been participating in conferences in the past few years.
It's been a lot of like online.
Right, right, but those.
No one's gone to conferences.
Right, exactly, so, yeah.
It's also at DSAU that we have a number of new.
New employees, yeah, yes, hi, Chris, yes, right, yeah.
Well, and one of those conferences specifically is the Law Conference around SED. So that's twice a year, that's a really important one.
You have to go to that one, please. I have a first and a second. Any more discussion?
I mean, I, I appreciate the desire to make the cut, I can't support it, I think we have to have conferences for our administrative team, for District Wide, for people to be able to go to these things. I think it makes them better educators, it makes them better administrators, I see a lot of value in professional learning, and so while there may be online options available, and there may be some, I know Mary's made a lot of effort to bring things in-house as much as possible, there is still value to collaborating with colleagues and finding out different things, what they do, and bringing that idea back, and that kind of organic thinking, I think we would be diminishing if we didn't have enough of a conference line item in there, so I, I appreciate it, but I can't support it.
Yeah, to me, it's, um, this would affect the kids, this would affect the students, because the more well-trained and knowledgeable our, our staff are, the, the better outcomes we'll see for our students.
I agree, I think this is where, how we improve our district.
So we have a first and a second.
Just my thought is, it's not zeroed out, there's still money in the budget, as everyone knows, it's the bottom line budget at the end. And certainly, that hasn't prevented conferences and workshops from being attended in years past. I'm not suggesting at all that conferences and workshops not be attended in fiscal year 24. At the end of the day, we're faced with a nearly one-point-three million dollar increase, and I'm trying to do the small part to get that down, so.
So I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion for thirteen hundred dollars to reduce line 580 under.
I don't know if Andrew's gonna make a different motion about five hundred, yeah.
Well, I think what we can do, though, is, I think Tara, your motion's correct, we can stick to travel, and then go down to the next line item for, for, oh, let's see here, you're.
Five eighty.
Where was the five, let's see, where's the thirteen, oh, that was under travel.
That was travel, yeah.
So I, right, so I'm gonna make a separate motion for travel. The motion for travel is a twenty percent reduction, same conversation, that is equal to four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
A second for discussion again.
What is NSA National Conference?
NSA.
And SNA?
SNA, this School Nutrition Association.
I was gonna say NSA, isn't that like super secretive? We have somebody that goes to that?
We can't talk about that.
Yeah.
I'm old. NSA, SNA, SNU, SNA.
So we, we do best when the national conferences are in Boston, and there's one coming up in Boston either this summer or the next summer, so.
July 24.
You know, it wouldn't be, it's just a lot different of a cost to go to a national conference in Boston than it is to get on a plane and go somewhere else.
I, I will tell you, I have, I have made it clear that I don't expect anybody to buy a plane ticket and fly anywhere, that, that's not the way we're gonna do conferences anymore.
So will it cost thirteen hundred dollars to go to Boston?
It will not, that's why we're proposing that we can safely cut to thirteen hundred, but.
Okay.
I don't, I can't really speak honestly to the full four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two. I can tell you thirteen hundred, it'll be right there, and then we'll have to go back to all those lines and try to figure that out. So you just double-click on the number in the pivot table, it tells us where they all are, and off we go, but.
All right, so I have a first and a second.
I, as I'm going through this, my original concern, so this, does this include mileage? Like just for, you know, going, so this wouldn't be like deposits going to the bank, right?
Right, if you look at food service, there's two amounts.
Oh, I'm looking at the whole thing now, all of it, okay.
But on, on the food service, that's Director's Mileage, two hundred dollars, so that's for her to drive to the bank? That's for her to drive from the high school to the.
Okay, so it is, so it's that?
Yeah.
But, but so when I look at the detail of what Andrew put together, there's not a lot of small amounts, so I feel like most of this is coming from, number one, special services, so that's ten thousand of it. And then the second biggest bucket is school and district admin, you know, three, three thousand, two thousand.
And if you're talking about travel, right?
Correct.
So some of that is by our providers between schools, so when our high school doesn't have a speech pathologist, so the speech pathologist sees a student at GMS, sees a student at LMS, goes to CHS to teach a class. So some of that is that mileage.
Yep, and I'm not gonna touch that, but I'm thinking maybe there is an opportunity through the school admin, school and district admin, district admin's almost four thousand.
What you're gonna find is, we haven't gone there yet, but underneath SAU, specific to 580 and specific to travel, you'll see an increase of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, which includes mileage of sixteen twenty-five, and it includes conferences of twenty-two fifty. So I would anticipate a good portion of that money coming from potentially that line.
Yep.
And there's, there's, there's a few others in the budget like that, too.
Yep.
Anyway.
Okay, so I have a first and a second, we ready to vote, Andrew?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
Is that two, three?
Two, three, yep.
So the thirteen hundred dollars could have come out of that as well, right?
But now we can make a motion to reduce the food service travel.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reduce the food service traveled by thirteen hundred dollars.
I will second that.
I'll call the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Five, zero.
Yep, anything else of food service?
So I, I have three other things in food service.
Oh, no.
So there, two of the three remaining are also reductions, one is an increase. So on page two, 580 travel, you'll notice that at each of the other schools, there was a hundred dollars for travel, and if you look in the notes, it's a hundred dollars, so this is again with the quadruple save thing, that the note hundred dollars didn't get transferred over to the requested hundred dollars. So we're looking to make the, the notes equal what the requested is, so.
Which line is that again, sorry?
This is page two, 580 travel.
Is this GMS mileage?
This is GMS tra, yep, mileage reimbursement.
So that would be one hundred dollars?
Maybe a hundred dollars.
Add.
Add, yeah, and again, my next two are deductions.
Can you, can you, can I do them all at once?
Is that okay with everyone?
So go ahead and give it, give them to us.
Okay.
So that's an add.
Well, let's hear it.
Yes, but the rest we don't.
So the next one is also on page two, LMS, 430 Repairs and Maintenance. So if you added up all the notes, it would equal to eleven hundred, but you can see over in the requested budget, that is two thousand. We wanna actually bring down the requested budget to a thousand, so that'd be a difference of a thousand. So again, page two, 430 Repairs and Maintenance for LMS.
Yep.
For LMS, got it.
And then. Okay. Okay, I, I apologize, the last one was not a food servicing that had to do with that vote you made in regards to LMS and bringing down LMS, so that, that's the end for, for food service, those three.
My seat two. They voted on one.
All right, I'll make a motion to increase the travel 580 on the food service budget from zero to one hundred dollars.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
I'll make a motion to reduce LMS Food Service Operation, line 430 Repairs and Maintenance from two thousand dollars to one thousand dollars.
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Doug, what does that bring the bottom line budget for food services to? Because it was at an increase of thirty-nine nine oh three, what is it now?
Thirty-nine nine oh three, you said?
Yeah, that's what it was.
That's what it was, but what is?
So it is.
Minus a thousand, plus a hundred.
Thirty-nine thousand, it goes down to thirty-seven seven oh three.
Thank you.
Great, we're ready to move on to facilities?
So that's the increase, right, thirty-seven seven oh three?
That's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line increase.
Bottom line increase.
Yes, yes.
Right, but I mean, where's the actual bottom line of that budget?
Oh, I, I was just looking at the increase, that's okay.
I can do that.
That's okay.
So it was two seventy-nine, one fourteen, right, Michelle? That will be two seventy-six, nine fourteen.
Excuse me.
All right, moving on to facilities, any motions?
No motions for me?
No. No? No? Andrew?
No?
No, I'm good.
All right, business. Any motions?
No.
None from me. Did you have any motions, Tara? Did you have any motions, Tara, Heidi, um, Tina? Transportation. Do we have any motions?
No motions.
No motions? Andrew, any motions? No?
All contractual.
SAU? Any motions? No?
Oh, I gotta do my math. Okay, I would like to try to bring down legal. I know that we are at our cap for at spending this year, but I wanted to see if I could maybe just... So the last two years, the approved budget for FY '23. So let me just do some addition here.
I would keep in mind that next year's a contract year.
It's a contract year.
Yeah, that's true. Alright, so maybe I won't, because the three-year average is 53 and knowing that we were, are gonna be on the high end, I will not do that. Okay, thank you.
School board. Do we have any motions? I do not.
I don't.
Andrew? Any motions?
This is not where stipends are, so no.
Alright.
Um, I just have a quick question, I'm sorry. Mike, remind me why every other year, the printing and binding for the ballots is higher? Is it the number of elections that we have in a year? So we have 2,000, then up about 5,000, then 2,000, then 5,000 again?
So the only actual is the 2,000, so it was 6,000 in 2020.
Yep.
Actual, 21 was 2,000, so that's down quite a bit.
Right.
But it's the same thing, we're printing for one election.
Well, in 2020, that was 6,000.
Because we...
Because of the reprint.
And we also had a special election in here because we had...
Right.
Right?
But shouldn't it be level every year? We only...
No, ballot printing goes up every year because the survey, the labor agenda goes up every year. We send it out to...
Right, but if we spent, if we spent 4,900 in, in actual in '22, why is it, why would, why did we budget only 2,000 in '23?
Personnel, um...
And now it's back up to 5,100?
So I'm not sure why we, we underbudgeted last year.
Okay.
So we're, we're trying to get in line to the actual amount of cost, which is closer to 5,000.
Okay, thank you.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Um, HR. Any motions?
No, not for me?
Not for me. Personnel. Do we have any motions?
Yes, I'm gonna invite Holly up to the table, sorry Holly.
No, good, thank you.
You deserve it or here, it's your choice.
Long time no talk.
I know.
Are we expecting a conversation here?
Yeah, that's just why you care.
I, I know.
I thought you were about to make motions, I'm like, come on up before we get into them. So I, I, is there anything else we wanna say or...
Why don't you say, wow, we have a board member out? So he gets an opportunity to come back.
You're not the board member.
No pressure.
We still love you, Francis.
No pressure.
Okay. Well, I thank you, so I did connect with the HR director today for a short time. It was sent to the board, an updated list of vacant positions, which was one of the requests that we had. Uh, so that was sent to your inboxes, which is a change over the vacant slide that you'll see in this presentation, so that slide, that worksheet is no longer accurate. The notable difference is that in the, in the, in the Excel workbook, the vacant positions totaled 362,978, as we talked about, which are these numbers right here. However, that is not accurate as, as we've talked about. The actual number of vacant positions per Excel zone's updates is 522,566 dollars. There's a number of reasons for that. I think the notable, the notable difference is, there's a position in the budget, which is a one-to-one ratio. However, it's not a one-to-one, one-to-one formula. So you could have multiple paraprofessionals showing up as a vacant position, but you don't see the number of paraprofessionals that are vacant. So as an example, in the revised file for LMS, there's seven vacant positions. There's, um, well, seven, at, at CHS, there's three. At GMS, there's 10, 7, 9, or 10. So the number of positions has gone up, which has raised that budget, raised that vacancy. So I just wanted to highlight that for the board.
Thank you for getting to the bottom of that, Andrew.
Sure, so that being said, I also understand and appreciate that there's contractual obligations that we are obligated to keep in the budget, um, including paraprofessionals, um, et cetera. When all that's said and done, there's still vacant positions outside of what I believe to be contractual of 142,000 dollars.
Such as?
What are you basing that on, Andrew?
Sure.
Like, I think we need custodians. I don't wanna cut, maybe someday we'll get a bunch of custodians, cause we are very short and we're paying overtime.
So there, there were positions that were recently filled, which is great and welcome to the district. Those that are listed as vacant.
Yeah, okay.
I've pulled them out, so those are not included, okay? There is, um, a speech pathologist. There is a part-time teacher. There is a math tutor. And there is, looks like there is a custodian as a part of that. So that number of 142,000 is the combination of just the salaries. No associated benefits as a part of that. Just the salaries.
Can I just speak to the part-time math tutor? Is that possible, sorry, I wanna interrupt you here?
Well, do we, I, I don't know that I have a second. So I'm making a...
I don't know what your motion is yet.
My motion is to reduce the vacant positions in the budget by 142,000 dollars.
I'll second for discussion, uh, but I need to, I'm trying to understand...
And comprised again of which positions?
So in the spreadsheet that Holly sent, right, and I have it here, um, I don't know if... Mike, can I take the cord?
Yeah. Cause I, when I, whoops, wrong cord. When I, uh, saved it into Sheets last night, it no longer is interactive.
Alright, I'll make this bigger.
I wouldn't call a para-contractual, I would call it like, needed by law.
Need-driven.
Yeah, it's a, not a contract, it's, it's written in a legal document that we need paraprofessionals.
So what's in red?
The red are the ones that I've highlighted and are a part of my motion, which is 142,000 dollars.
There.
So you wanna cut those?
I want to remove these from the budget, given that they've been unfilled.
So, so I'm reading it as two full-time custodians at CHS.
Yes.
The speech pathologist.
Which might be IEP-driven, is my guess.
The part-time teachers, that, that's the PE that we've been, it's been a revolving door.
Yep.
And the part-time math tutor at LMS.
And the part-time math tutor, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Grantham wanted to talk about the part-time math tutor.
Yes.
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 Yeah, I did.
How you, how you second?
Yeah, I did.
So, I have concerns about deleting the math tutor program based on the scores that we're seeing coming back from our SAS data, based on the deficits that our students are facing on a daily basis. This is a position we're still actively praying to find someone for, because I believe it's a very big... We're working on differentiating within our classrooms. But, um, it's still something where we have students that are showing interest in that understanding.
And this person is not salaries, it's not a full-time position?
How long has this been unfilled?
The math tutor? Since the beginning of this year. Our current math tutor from last year was hired as a teacher.
She transitioned from a part-time to a full-time.
I need you to change something on that spreadsheet, the 30, the first one in red, that's the cost of one custodian. Can you double that amount for me?
If you're cutting two?
Yeah.
I have a question.
It's, it's wrong, that's an error.
Salary represents one person.
Yeah, so that needs to be doubled.
Should double that.
So are you looking to cut two or one?
My motion's for the one.
I have a question for this to you, don't wait, don't worry.
I'm gonna fix that.
So, this speech services, um, I would assume they are IEP-driven, that we need, and we're out of compliance because we don't have a, I, I've said the word, sorry, we might not, do we hired?
No.
We hired?
No.
We are not out of compliance, it was turned into a contracted.
That's what my next question, so we're, we're, I'm sorry, so we're paying a contracted person a lot of money to fulfill the needs that we are required to meet by law.
Yep.
And so it's now a contracted service not in the budget? Or it's in the budget?
It's in the, it's in the budget.
Not as a, as a district.
Yeah, we couldn't fill it, but we had to...
To fill it to meet, to meet the students.
Yeah.
Right.
So you wouldn't be out of compliance.
So we are paying for this service and getting it done? And the contract is through the end of the year, or?
Yes.
Okay, and then we might have an opportunity to fill that position again next year. Right, so the contract would be, is the contract through the end of the year or until we find someone?
Yes.
Through the end of the year.
Okay.
Cause you had to have this year offset.
Do you happen to know what we're paying the contractor for, for this year? I know, it's a...
Yes.
Okay. Should I flip to it in my book? Is it in here?
It's not.
Okay.
Is it in the budget item?
The budget item is the...
Is that?
That position. But we couldn't get anybody into it, so we've had a contract at a higher rate.
At a higher, that was my question, that's what I was asking too.
It's not the exact rate, but it is a higher rate.
It is a higher.
So, the contract right now, Sophia put a cap of 50,000 on, so... Can't go over 50,000 unless they reach back out, and that, that's authorized at that point.
But the amount of services for 50,000 will not be equal to if we had the employee, right?
Right, right, right.
And if I may, just I'm custodian, so remind the board that, uh, there are custodial metrics that you use. Square footage, um, you can then calculate how many custodians you need. So we had done that analysis a couple of years ago. We added one more custodian at the high school because of the square footage, they were understaffed. Um, although we have not filled that position, once again, in conversations with our association, there have been concerns expressed about cleanliness in the building. I worry about taking that reduction, because that is our most heavily-used building at nights. Athletic events and so forth, that place is, is humming, you know, many days a week. And so, taking that reduction, that would worry me. We wanna get that filled.
I also remember the Neast visit, and there was a comment that they specifically said, oh, for a building this age, it looks like it's, you know, it's older, or not as well-measured.
They actually said it was dirty.
Dirty.
And they said we should increase the amount of cleaning that we do. And we did, that was, we responded to that, but you're right, Neast did cite that.
In regard to the PE position at the high school, I think Josh and I have stated the case pretty clearly about the, the need there. I also think that we could have a creative, um, idea to, to work around this, but I think it would have to be discussed enough.
Yeah.
So in terms of the cuts, I mean, that's what's proposed right now, and that's the motion, and that's the second. I can't support these cuts. Um, there's just too much of a need in the district for these positions. And I know they're not filled right now, but the hope is that they would be for FY '24, number one. Number two, I understand there's been some discussion about a police officer position that was cut from the town budget that was unfilled. I, I do believe there's a difference, we can't carry over money for a position, correct?
Correct.
We have, but the town can?
Yes, and they do. I think it's like 8% of their budget.
So for that unfilled position, if that person came back, they would be able to take...
Cause it was, the position was unfilled all this past year too.
Okay.
And it's not a school resource.
That was my understanding, but I wanted to verify it before I said that, so I...
Yep, it's a difference.
I'll call the vote. Move on.
Okay. All those in favor of the cut?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Obsteained?
What's the vote?
1, 4.
1, 4, okay. Well, you said aye also, so I can...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I forgot we're siding around.
I'm assuming 1, 4, my read was 1, 4.
It was 1, 4.
Remember, Dr. J is the moderator.
If we could, if we could cut the part-time, Jim, I'm not allowed to say Jim, physical...
PE.
PE, teacher, if we would get a full-time one, I assume we will cut the part-time one, if that passes, or...
So I have a couple of other motions.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to, and, and correct me, I'm just not finding the page, but the school board's stipends are in...
Yeah.
The salaries?
Towards the back.
Okay, correct.
Oh, okay, opened right to it, page 34. Yep. 23, 11.
34?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Yep, I'm gonna, uh, motion to reduce the school board salaries, line 110, by 5,464 dollars.
Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second it for just discussion.
I can't support this, because I think it's between you and the district. I don't know what anyone's financial situation is up here, it's not a lot of money, but it might make the difference in Heidi's children, or you might buy a computer. I mean, it's still like...
So Mike, this was something that was voted on by taxpayers?
No.
No, this is FY '24.
No, and in the past, when the town has found themselves in tough financial straits, they've actually removed their stipend since in the past. So there has, not this year, but there have been years in the past where there was a tough financial time, and they actually have, so there is precedent for removing it.
I support anyone who wants to write a check back to the district, please feel free to do so. And I don't want your name used, I just, if, we wanna, I think it comes out to like 800 dollars after taxes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
It's not about the money. Um, it's never been about the money. None of us are here for the money or the fame and glory that people seem to think that we get. I, I, it's insulting though, that even that token can be, you know, is used as a, as a bargaining tool. And I'm not saying that for me, I'm not, I'm, um, I'm saying that for future board members. I, you know, I may not be on the board in FY '24, but there might be somebody for whom that little nugget is, is, is to show appreciation for their time and effort and energy.
Honestly, when I ran, I had no idea there was even a stipend.
Right, none of us ran for the money.
I mean, maybe the last couple of years are different, but maybe not. I mean, there's been discussion, like, who's even gonna wanna run for school board at this point in time? Three years ago, I was the only one running.
Yeah.
Okay? You know, is, is that little thing extra gonna help people? I don't know.
Stand, it's between you and the SAU. You do what you wanna do with your stipend, donate it to charity, donate it back to the school, write a check to the music department, I, that's my stance on this issue.
Okay. My view is, it's just trying to do our part to help out the district in a 1.3 million dollar increase here. That's it.
And I think we can still do our part, and I, you know, everybody looks for ways to contribute in their own, the way that they can.
Alright. Call the vote.
Motion and a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Obsteained? Encourage anyone who would like to donate their check to return to Holly?
Prior to being paid.
DeBry, he's just dropping off in his mailbox?
But yeah.
Thank you for volunteering.
Send me an email, I'll loop in the right people.
Okay, yep, I have another motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make a bottom line reduction to the personnel budget by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for attrition.
I'll second that one.
Discussion?
So year-over-year in the budget, and this is looking eight months to twenty months out, there's changes in positions. There's changes or re-prioritization of individuals, which results in salary changes. And at the end, at the end result, there's money left over in the budget as a result of the shifts within personnel that just happens. Retirements, whatever it might be, bringing in new employees at a lower rate, it just happens. And so this attrition cut is a reduction as a result of the forecasted and foreseen changes in the FY twenty-four budget.
We have a first and a second, any comments? All right, I'm gonna call the vote.
Sorry, I have a question. How does the district feel about this cut?
Is this, is this the same thing that resulted last year in us having to cut positions in the high school?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
This is if somebody leaves and we hire somebody else with the savings is.
Andrew is correct, if you look at the last five years, we have realized savings in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand in terms of people who leave the district at a higher pay step, and then hiring people. We have tightened that over time because the market's gotten tighter. We used to have a hundred people applying for a PE position, and now we have none. Used to have four hundred people applying for an elementary position, and now that's not the case, right? So that's put us in a position where we have to make sure that we can attract people into the district. So sometimes you have to pay more, we brought a lot of people in at top steps because that's what it took. You know, last year, we cut a Spanish physician at LMS because we couldn't find anybody. This year, we hired two very experienced Spanish teachers who are doing, getting rave reviews at LMS about the work that they're doing. But we didn't save money on those positions, that's the reality of it. So do I think we could absorb a hundred and fifty thousand? I think we probably could. It'll have to be tightly monitored, and there could be a point where I would say to a principal, I've never done this, but I might say, you're gonna have to find somebody lower on the scale in doing this because I'm saving money for a position that's gonna be harder to fill.
I have no problem with that.
That's something that we may have to say, but I think we can.
I don't.
That's, that's great that you have no problem with it, but put yourself in my position
I know.
That came into the building short teachers and parents, and now you're gonna tell me that I, I can offer even less to hire staff? I understand that we, we have this extra money, but to say that I now have to offer less money, again, with twenty districts around us that are already paying more money, you're handcuffing our hiring process.
I don't want you hiring every new physician at the top step.
I'm not saying the top step.
That's what I'm saying.
But if we get rid of this money and all of a sudden, you know, they're gonna come in at tier five, or, you know, master fifteen, step four, and he's saying, well, you, you can only hire a bachelor's fifteen.
And that's the thing, I don't want.
I don't think you would say that.
If I don't have any bachelor's fifteen applicants for a job, you just, you handcuff me in, in hiring.
But I don't want to make the decision on hiring based off of money.
Right.
So I want to make it off of the most qualified candidate who comes through the door, who would be in the best interests of our students. So if you're being told you can't hire any higher than a step two for a position, chances are that person isn't coming in with a lot of experience, that person doesn't have classroom time. It was newer, I mean, and not to say that they're not fantastic, they're, you could hire a step two that's fantastic. I don't like making decisions like, I understand, we, this is the constant, this, this, with the balance up to the taxpayer, and what's in the best interest of the students, but I, I, I have concerns about this. My other question, what have we done in years past with respect to attrition? Have we, at a school board level, made that cut, or is that typically cut in budget committee? Is that typically cut?
I.
When is, if, is that cut at all? I, I don't know.
I believe the board has made a cut relative to that, but I'm looking at Brian to see if you recall the board making that cut. I know that the budget committee has made that cut.
And the budget committee could say, it should be more, they have that right.
They could.
We've also come in before, on one of these years, when we knew we had a lot of money making that cut.
Yeah, we, we have proposed that cut in the past, that is right. So.
But you aren't proposing it in the budget that you provided to us?
We are not currently proposing it.
But it is on the table?
But we're also sensitive to a one-point-three million dollar ask, and we're sensitive to getting voter support for us, which will ripple effect across all the positions, so it's a push-pull, right? I'm, I'm sitting here saying, can we absorb that? I believe we can, because I think that's a better alternative than a failed budget. Then when, then the answer back to the principals will be, hire chief, we don't have a budget, we're on a default.
You can't say hire chief, that makes it.
Yes, we can, yes, we can, if we're in a default list, we have to.
I don't think you should hire all teachers that, that have had one or two years' experience. There are good teachers out there that have five, ten years' experience, but I don't think it's necessary to hire everybody at the top step. That's what I'm saying, I'm not saying I want.
But I would save the money for a high school physics teacher.
Absolutely.
When you're lucky to find somebody, I would, that's the conversation we would have to have.
That's why we, it's, we've done it that way.
But if we're in a default budget mode, that's what we have to work with, and that's a worst-case scenario. I want to go in with a budget that the voters will support so that we have what we need in order to function.
Ma'am chairman, I'd like to call the vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained, zero.
What's that?
Three, two.
Three, two, one, zero, sorry.
Hold on, I think it was three. Was it three?
Two, three, voted aye.
All those in favor, aye.
Oh, you did, okay, sorry, I didn't hear.
Three, two, zero.
And it is noted that we made this attrition ourselves.
Yep.
That doesn't mean the budget committee can't do more, or they could, I agree.
I vote, I feel like we need to show that we're making some progress tonight, and I feel like that, that does, that does, and the historical shows that, you know, that we should be under that, hopefully, you know.
So I do have one more motion, and I'm glad to talk about it in discussion. So the motion is to reduce health insurance by five percent to a hundred and thirty-four, the motion's for one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred reduction.
One thirty-four five hundred?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second for discussion.
Thank you. So as presented last night, and apologies again to those in the public with the video that seemed to cut out, we can certainly bring it up here. One of the worksheets is on insurance.
Can you make a little bit of that there?
I can, yes, you're welcome. So within the insurance lines, and these are specifically lines two-eleven and two-twelve throughout the personnel budget, health insurance and dental insurance, I'm just looking at health insurance right now, if we're following along here. Health insurance over the years has been right around two-point-one million dollars, again, across, across the district. Two-point-eight, two-point-zero-eight and twenty, two-point-one and twenty-one, two-point-one and twenty-two, two-point-one and twenty-three. And then in twenty-twenty-four, it's nearly two-point-seven. Right, my understanding and as presented on Tuesday, is health insurance, just health insurance, is expected, or is, is, is now confirmed as going up by ten percent.
Is it confirmed? It's not confirmed.
It's not confirmed, okay.
Place holder, ten percent.
It's a placeholder of ten percent. The budget as presented represents a twenty-four percent increase. There has been some email exchange, and I had a conversation with the HR director today. I, quite frankly, I don't get it still, I don't understand it still. I, there was, there was an email exchange to the board about credits for health insurance premiums, holiday credits, and all this jazz. I, even all of that considered, this line item in my mind is still way over budgeted, and I'm being conservative with a five percent reduction.
I don't, you explain your response, Holly, cause I didn't fully get it either.
What I would just ask the board to do is, so we talked about December first, JD brought up December first, right? So give us a little time on this number, because we were hunkered down for several hours today going through it, and I think we would like a little more time to come back with what we think is the right thing, because trying to get, he doesn't understand it, we're not sure that we understand it at this point. It's got to do with the way it's being reported out of the system, and we want to get it right and understand it, so if you.
What are the numbers coming out, the actual?
So here's what Doug helped me kind of go through today and what I sent. The FY twenty-three, the FY twenty-three number, so the FY twenty-three approved
Column F.
Is with the holiday credit, so that number is under budgeted.
Credit back, so it would have been higher initially.
Yeah.
Yes, it should, I should have taken for FY twenty-two into FY twenty-three the rate increase without the holiday credit, that shows the holiday credit. And when I was thinking about it and budgeting for twenty-twenty-four, I took the increase from the rates without the holiday credit. Or I took the, I put the increase in prior to the holiday credit, which how, is how I think it should be done because we don't know what the holiday credit's gonna be. When we got those approved rates in FY twenty-three, they said, oh, here's your holiday credit. So we took the eight percent, eight-point-six percent increase off of that holiday credit. We're working on pulling more numbers to go, like, deeper dive. We've pulled, I found a report from last year out of personal budgeting for those FY twenty-three numbers to go through and say for each person, this is what was put in the budget for FY twenty-three. This is what we think should have been put in the budget for FY twenty-three.
So right now, it's apples to oranges.
I think it's reasonable, I'll withdraw my motion.
Change it to a later date prior to Thanksgiving.
I will withdraw my second, yep. We will get you all the information prior to that.
Thank you.
We have
I do not like.
We have one more board meeting. Let's just talk about what that means, we have one more board meeting, right?
Yep.
So we'll have to have something in front of you in November to, if we're gonna take further action on this.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, no, we'll be fine.
Yeah. Absolutely, I'd like to get it via email or whatever to you guys before to ask questions, and then make sure it's under discussed before we get to that board meeting, so you have.
What you'll see is, we'll make corrections to fiscal year twenty-three budget to, to raise it up, and then remember, at the bottom of that budget is an eight-point-six percent increase to all of insurance. So when, once you see the fiscal year twenty-three budget first, say, like, a family plan of, you know, right now, it's showing up as twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, it will show up as twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Multiply that by the eight-point-six percent, that's gonna bring you to the twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is the same thing that you're seeing fiscal year twenty-four. But again, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars, times a ten percent at the bottom, which is that placeholder that, that we put in for increased insurance.
So when, when you do your work, if I could just ask that you also take a quick look at dental? I know it's much smaller in the scheme of things, but it's also showing a ten percent increase, and we're expecting a one and a half percent. So I think it's the same story.
Okay.
But.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like those numbers before we make any.
Is there a holiday credit with the dental?
The dental, what they do, last year, it's, they suggest, cause it's usually such a small amount, they put it right on the first bill, but I will look at all of the rates.
At this point, I guess my question would be, do we approve the budget as a whole minus health insurance and leave that line item to be approved on the seventeenth?
We need to give, we need to approve something for the budget committee.
Right, yeah, and that's what, I, so.
Like personnel.
Are there any other, are there any other motions?
No.
On any other budget sections by the board?
I do not have any.
I will make a motion to approve a bottom line, which can be adjusted, to approve a bottom line of twenty-four million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars.
Is that the budget?
That's the number from the minute, if you, I can make this bigger so everyone can see it in the room. We started at twenty-four, six-thirty-eight, we made and approved various motions this evening. This is the number that I just made the motion for right here.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'm just wondering if that drives, have you been making changes?
So Doug is tracking on his computer.
I don't think it's wrong, correct me, it looks wrong.
I just want to make sure the numbers line up before I call the vote.
Sure.
That sucks to me.
We added in a hundred dollars, that's here, and then the reductions.
It's a good point. We having a discussion about personnel and non-public?
Well, so I think, I think there's a couple of things.
Yeah.
Approve this amount as to where we stand.
Yeah.
So the public knows where we stand.
Yeah.
We can go into non-public, and if there's further action, we can just update the budget committee before we turn it over.
Yeah.
On November sixteenth, we're gonna come back with one last shot at it.
Yeah.
And we can report on the seventeenth to the budget committee what action we took then. So you kind of have these other opportunities still.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, four, sixty-nine, five, forty-two? And again, if it's, if it's not correct, we have another shot to get it correct, so I think, I think it's right, but.
It's definitely either correct or, yeah.
Years ago, I mean, Corey and I go back and forth, right, years ago, this is where we're off by a couple of bucks.
Yeah.
Right, somehow, some way, I don't know why, but. All right, motion second, call the vote.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Five, zero, zero.
Oh, that's coming up.
The what? That's the difference.
Oh, okay.
That's the total of what we reduced this evening.
Okay. Okay.
I'm like, wait, is there more coming?
No.
No, we still have quite a few little tweaks to make. Do I call a motion?
Are you doing that, Holly?
Yes. Motion to go into non-public, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee. Oh, yes.
So Andrew asked a question the other day, and I'm sure he spoke to Holly about it, and I know there's budget committee members here that weren't here the other night.
Okay.
And I know the same question I asked the first time we did this woo thing, that was the raises, how they appear in the files.
Yep.
Cause I'm certain that some budget committee members know what I'm gonna say, fully smoke, we're paying these people.
Can I, can I?
Yes, please do.
All right, I'm not gonna present it because of the sensitive information, right? But.
No, just.
Why it looks the way it does.
So I am not going to make a reduction in salaries. The reason for that is, I believe there's room for improvement with how we account for salaries.
In regards to?
In regards to the past contract, the past, the past, the voter-approved contract that was passed. When the voters approved the contract, it was approved as a lump sum number, call it a hundred thousand dollars, whatever, what's the correct amount?
Three hundred and fifty-ish.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, all right, so the voters approved three hundred and fifty thousand. In the budgeting system, there's one line item for three hundred and fifty thousand, and it wasn't allocated back across the hundred and thirteen, hundred and fourteen district employees, all right? So when we look at employees and look at year-over-year raises, it's not correct because the contract wasn't distributed across all the people, right? And so now that we've gone through year one of the contract and year two, now it's catching up, cause now it is distributed. So if you look at individual salaries, it will show fiscal year twenty-two, fifty thousand dollars, fiscal year twenty-three, fifty thousand dollars, fiscal year twenty-four, seventy-five thousand dollars, right? When really the raise should be split over two years instead of one. Did I do that justice?
You did, absolutely.
You absolutely did, cause it was.
Thank you.
Andrew, one point to call right now, as far as that, that is union contract employees.
Yes.
According to that, no, every employee across the entire district falls into that, even though it's not contracted.
Correct, because you're, sorry, your, um, non-union employees have a salary pool that the superintendent spreads out over. So the salary pool every year is budgeted as a lump sum at the bottom. So the budget is posted into the budget system, we don't do raises until after that, so you don't.
So, the budget is posted into the budget system, we don't do raises until after that, so you don't see their new, someone's new salary until the following year. If you look at my salary, for FY twenty-four, it's my current salary right now, so it's a year behind me.
But that lump sum, that was not part of what was in the, the war there.
Correct, correct, yes, yes.
That is correct.
That's, that's what I wanted to buy.
And it's not as, is not evenly distributed.
Correct.
Right, because some employees might get three, some employees might get two, or five, or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm, right.
So it's not as clear-cut as the contract is.
Correct. Alright, I'd like to thank everyone for dealing with me and my learning curve and trying to figure this all out, and Andrew for doing that awesome spreadsheet. Non-public session, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any employee or the disciplining of such employee.
Jen. Just Jen.
Sorry.
Keep reading, keep going.
Good night.
Sorry.
Or the investigation of any charges against him, unless any employee affected has the right to a meeting and requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. The hiring of any person as a public employee matters which, if discussed in public, would lightly affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, yes, aye, aye, aye.
Yes, aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.